Saw a lightning strike in the distance as I was standing in the middle of a big water puddle. I'm like, hey, but I'm gonna move on.
Really? Here we go.
I'd like to bring this meeting to order, and I'm going to ask Alderman Davis to introduce our guest invocator. If that's the correct word.
It is now. Let's welcome tonight Reverend Mitzi Johnson. She is the new pastor at Trinity Methodist. And many of you will be happy to know that she is a native-born Tar Heel. She went to the University of North Carolina. And she is a graduate of Duke Divinity School. Yay.
Both schools.
Do you all stand?
Yep.
Let's go to God in prayer. Gracious God, we do give you thanks for this day, for those whom we love, for this beautiful community in which we live. And we welcome your presence among us. You tell us that if any lack of wisdom, let that person come to you and ask. And so we do ask for your wisdom for this meeting. And we ask that you guide our discussions and decisions and help us to seek what is best for all involved. Lord, we also ask for a spirit of unity. Help us to set aside personal agendas and work together in harmony, trusting that with your guidance and grace, that our words will be filled with compassion and respect for one another, and that our actions will reflect that also. And God, I boldly ask that you would pour out your richest blessings on each person here. That you will make each person here rich in you and add no sorrow. That your grace and your favor will fall upon us. And thank you, God, for blessing us in all the ways that we can't even name or imagine. And we pray it in your holy and gracious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We, if you come to these or watch these on TV, we changed it up a little bit. We're going to have some comments in the beginning, and we're going to go into public comment after that. Part of that reason is the fact that if you looked at the agenda today, you saw that the Historic Commission discussion has been taken off the agenda. If you're here to speak about that, I still encourage you all to speak about that if you're here. The game plan now is to have a work session in this room, where we can figure out a time that we have the room available to us and everybody's calendar fits, which will be in the next, I would hope, the next two weeks, in which we have the Historic Commission people here. We have the citizens here. We have the Board of Aldermen here. And we sit down and have a discussion about all the different issues that are out there that certainly have been brought to us in the last 72 hours. And we look for compromise. We look to figure out what's the goal and make sure that we are staying with the goal. And those are the things that were at the top of the top banner. After that, I expect, and I know that I will get from you, the civil discourse that Southport should want. So with that, the agenda has a number of different topics on it. And as we get to those, we'll all be able to make comments about that. And with that, I'm going to ask, Moss, I'm sorry, Alderman Moss Sellar, do you have any comments, Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. Oddly enough, I do. I think it's important that our citizens are aware that the North Carolina House passed the de-annexation bill, SB 214, and it now has been sent back to the Senate for final consideration at the end of the month. SB 214 includes the de-annexation of the properties on North Howe, where the businesses, Southport Motor Cars and Southport Dog are located. I mentioned these businesses just as location references. These properties are owned by two different LLCs separate from these businesses. The original bill to de-annex these properties was introduced by our state House Representative, Representative Miller. I had the opportunity to go twice to Raleigh to speak against these de-annexations at two different House committee hearings, in which our representative spoke in support of the Southport de-annexations and noted that the city of Southport had sent a resolution speaking against the de-annexations of these three parcels. Among other reasons, our representative said that since the water and sewer was now provided by the county and no longer a city service, the city provided no services to these properties, and there was no benefit for these properties to remain in the city. According to the tax records, the property where the car lot is located is 1.85 acres. This is a big enough parcel that with county zoning could easily house a sizable 55-foot-tall building. With the loss of the ETJ, we are in a precarious position on Howe Street between 12th and 14th Streets, because so much of that was in the ETJ and never annexed into the city. We know that some change is inevitable, but we all need to be aware that these de-annexations and the county zoning now on Howe Street have the potential to forever change our entry corridor and not for the better.
Alderman Davis?
If I could add to that, just for clarity, we cannot annex properties as of about 2013. So roughly, well, yeah, 12 years ago. See, God doesn't even like this. It was a state law passed that there could be no involuntary annexations. So we can't annex something. But now the state legislature is taking the next step, which is allowing a private property owner to request de-annexation. And if they're allowing it with these two, I don't see how we stop. I have one other thing to say, different topic. Welcome, Pat Curtin. We haven't seen you in a long time. How are we going to make decisions without you? Welcome.
I'm just going to make a quick comment here. We are under technically a tornado watch right now. So I'm going to ask the fire chief, if he would be so kind, to kind of keep an eye on any alerts that come out, because the rest of us may be, if we have to, the center of the building is where we want to go to, okay? Just to get away from all the glass. Hopefully, we'll not have to do that. We've never had to do that, but who knows? Alderman Kelly?
On the agenda tonight, there is bed and breakfast event, zoning text amendment, and public hearing. I want to bring a potential conflict of interest up to the board. I own a motel in Southport. I have the ability to host events at my motel. I'm in the commercial business district, and I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention in case there's a potential conflict. I just wanted to bring it up.
So I'm going to ask our attorney first. I don't see a conflict, but do you see a conflict in that, sir?
Well, first, I don't know if there's any decision-making that's going to be going on tonight. But the extent that you feel like you have a conflict, I don't see an issue in yourself accusing.
For you, Rebecca. But the issue is that, because we've spoken, is that the appearance, and I should have said this upfront, the appearance of a conflict of interest. Okay. There's not going to be actually a vote on this tonight, so.
Just wanted to bring it up so that way.
Okay. Anything else, ma'am?
No, sir, thank you.
Alderman Spencer? Alderman Lay?
I'd just like to amplify on what Alderman Moss Sellar and Alderman Davis said about the bill that's going through. That could really, what's a nice way to put it? It could mess us up as a city, and we don't want that. We have a certain uniqueness to us. We'd like to keep it that way. And I don't even want to think about what the worst-case scenario could be if something happens there.
All right, we're on to public comment. Madam Clerk?
We'll start with all the historic district comments first. And the first one I have is Woody Wilson.
Woody, do you have a comment? That's okay.
Woody Wilson, 502 West Brunswick Street, the corner of Short and Brunswick Street. And the house was built in 1891, so it qualifies for the Historic Preservation Commission situation. I have to tell you, we've been traveling a lot, and I was not up to speed on the original 197-page document that I read that was dated from July, from your last get-together. I read through it. In fact, I've gone through it twice now, and I've still got some doubts about what I'm reading. Personally, I am not interested in somebody managing my house. I don't have a problem with the historic district and precluding some developer from coming in here and buying out a block of Southport, taking the buildings down, and putting up a five-story, no-frills motel or any other combination of that. What I do have a problem with is the details within this document. I don't know if I have enough hours in a day to go through complying with the requirements if we get into that. The certificate of, yeah, the COA, because I can't remember the last word. But the COA process is a time-consuming process. And I will keep this short because I know it's not on the agenda, and y'all have got some things you need to do. But I would ask you to consider in this, the main mechanism is to keep a developer from coming in here, buying up land, and then putting up whatever they want to put up. Because, but there seems like there's maybe another way to do this with the current ordinances that we have, modifying some of them, working to clarify. There's just got to be a better way. I don't need a full-time job, you know, trying to get my house repaired. Everything we've done to that historic house has been to enhance it and improve it. Now, I have 150 mile-an-hour hurricane winters in there. What are you going to say about that? And they are kind of tinted because we didn't want the furniture getting the sun on it all day long. Three sides of my house border the main street. You've got clauses in there about landscaping. You've got clauses about what I can do and can't do. I've got one side yard that I can do pretty much whatever I want to do within reason. We have not done one thing to that house that didn't improve it. We brought it up to code when it was not up to code. We put new electric in. We put new plumbing in, and we added on to the house. And we did it all within the idea of keeping a nice historical house in Southport. In 95, you could ride down West West, or you could ride down any of the other streets. Inevitably, there were torn-down buildings, dilapidated houses, historical houses. The people that came in here bought them, repaired them, and they are much better today. They're the core of what you're talking about now, putting all these requirements on an owner to have to deal with improvements. Personally, I just, like I said, I don't have time to be a full-time guy doing this. The Historical Preservation Commission has done an admirable job of pulling the documents together. I just don't think that we need to be in the business of doing what we're getting, what we appear to be headed to do. Figure out how to restrict the historical district so that it can't be overrun by every Tom, Dick, and Harry that walks in the door. And I just ask you to keep those things. So far, we've all been pretty civil about what's going on. I think there's plenty of room for discussion. I'm not angry about it. I just think that there's maybe a little better way to skin the cat than what we're doing. Anyway, thank y'all very much, and I appreciate the time to speak.
Gibby Wilson?
I do want to make a note. The document that you may have in your hand, which is from the last meeting, is not the most current document out there. There was a number of minutes taken from our meeting, the Board of Aldermen's meeting, and a number of those things have been adopted into the more current version. And then there were two, if I have this correct, I hope I have it correct. There were two other Historic Commission meetings, and additional things were brought up. So by the time we have the next work session, we hope to have to you the updated version and then a piece of paper, so you don't have to go look through 197 pages, what was changed. So it will say on page 197 or whatever it is, but here's the changes. Otherwise, it's very complicated to do that. And then there'll be another document that says the change, the things that were suggested and weren't changed. And we'll all have discussion points on that. So we are aware that the document that you may have from our last meeting is not as accurate as it might be. Okay? I'm sorry, ma'am, that I took some time from you.
That's all right, thank you. My name is Gibby Wilson, and I have lived in Southport one-third of a century. My husband's family has lived here 100 years longer than me. I have seen many improvements to Southport since I first saw it in 1966. The homeowners have taken great pride in their homes and their yards. The two or three glaring exceptions to this only show the good taste of the majority. We have made our town a very attractive, although unintentional, tourist attraction. We are not a problem. Downtown Southport has many appealing and well-maintained shops and restaurants. There are, however, three potential renovations or new construction sites on the horizon. These are the issue. The consensus seems to be to maintain the normal two-story limit on height and the required number of parking spots per business or residence. These should be handled at City Hall by building codes with teeth to them. The historic district regulations should apply to the business owners who have shown good taste so far. The homeowners, taxpayers, voters should not have the restrictive homeowner association imposed on us. This would only raise our taxes and insurance and justify additional city staff. Nor should we be required to be charged fees to make minor changes to our own properties. This is not a political mandate that should be hurriedly rammed through before the election. This is a ballot issue, and that should be, and that should only be voted on by those who are affected by it. Thank you.
Buddy Barnes?
Alderman, Mayor Buddy Barnes. I live at 425 West West Street. I'm a non-conforming house in the new proposed district for history. You can Google this, and you will find that these historic districts all across the country increase property values anywhere from 4% to 20%, 25%. That sounds great if you wanted to sell your house. I don't want to sell my house. I want to live here until I die. What I'm worried about is that the city and the county will immediately come in and raise my taxes because of this new historic district. As a non-conforming house, I don't have the options that other historic houses have in getting tax abatements or tax incentives for my property. My property is not historic. I can't apply for those. So I'm unfairly taxed because of this new district. And I appreciate y'all listening to us, and thank you.
Debbie Barnes?
Thank you for hearing us. My name's Debbie Barnes. I live on 425 West West Street. We are not a historical home, but we are now being placed in the overlay for the historic district. I have said before at a previous meeting that, like many people here who are even speaking, we all want to protect the historic character of this town. I still do. But the issue is not about how we need to regulate the homeowners that are here right now with some very minor things. It's really more about how do we protect it from the major renovations and new construction that are occurring. Now, I have a background I don't talk about much, and it's from my work. I'm retired. But I do know that any time you go through and you make big changes that can impact people, whether it's policy or benefits or whatever it might be, you need to try to put in a grandfather clause. Now, when I say grandfather clause, that's not going to show up in a document as grandfather clause. It's a little statement that will give people peace of mind. It will also ensure fairness. Some of those statements, we have seen in the big documents, where it may say like, Some of those statements, we have seen in the big documents where it may say, like, final citing, that you may continue, but, you know, from a standpoint, it can be maintained and replaced. But we don't say that everywhere in the document where we're asking for changes. And a lot of us have things in the documents that we are hearing are inappropriate. I'll give you an example. Hurricane shutters. I have the roll-up hurricane shutters, but I have them under an awning, so you don't see them. Well, you might some way up high. But in the document, it says they are not appropriate. But I don't see anywhere that it would allow me, if, you know, I could probably repair it, but if I had to take it down, and they take it away to try to work on it, and then they come back and they say, "We can't make it align with your current system," am I going to have to get a COA? And am I going to be told, "Oh, you may have to just change all of it now"? I don't believe our current board would do that. I have said in the last meeting, and I keep saying, I trust the current board. What I get concerned about is, down the road, how someone else may interpret things and take it too serious. When I look, so I like the idea of having a grandfather clause that's just very simple, something that actually states in general that any current materials and features that exist can be maintained and replaced without obtaining a COA or having to be removed, like the idea of a hurricane shutter. I can't predict the future. No one can. So to say that's not going to happen, well, you don't know. You don't know. I do know that I mentioned before about the commission and how it's made up. There are seven voting members, and I think two or three alternates, I'm not quite sure. But with that, and I understand why it's that way. I know the regs and stuff, and thank you, Mo. You are good. You are really good. She helped me to understand some other questions I had about it. The thing about it is, so I understand it's there, but here's the thing. We could eventually have where there's absolutely no one in the district that's being impacted by this on that board. So I really believe there needs to be a look at how do we fix that? The other thing, and I'm being biased, but I don't think so. I think the majority vote, it should be consisted of people, at least four people on that board who are inside the district. Think about where some of you live, and you've got an HOA. How would you feel if you had people outside your development who were making rules and telling you what you could and couldn't do? So I really believe we need to look somehow, how do we work that? And it may be just simply how we select who gets to be on the board. Maybe you don't need to change things, but we need to put a prioritization there. Now, back to that grandfather clause. There's another part of that. You know, a few years ago, the board approved on short-term rentals that it would become only in commercial and business. What they also did, and it's a type of grandfather clause, it made sure that the people who were already in residential areas who were having short-term rentals got to continue to have them. So here's a thought for you. Maybe all the people that are in the district, I could go really crazy on this one. Maybe everybody that'd be in the district would be exempt, at least while they own their property, unless something major happens. But what I'm actually going to kind of propose is that maybe all those non-contributing properties, we didn't sign up to be in an HOA. We moved here in this district, in the village, as we always call it, not to deal with an HOA. I've been in them, but I really don't want to be in one, and I really don't want to be in one where people outside of where I live are telling me what to do. So maybe we need to have those, have that looked at from a standpoint of the non-contributing properties at the very minimum be removed from the historic district. And you can do that. You don't have to do a big overlay. You can go by property and say what's in and what's not. So just another thought for consideration. The timeline, I noticed, did get changed in the agenda for when we were going to have it on the vote for tonight. So from one hundred and eighty to ninety days, I think that was really good, and I thank you, Mayor. You requested that, so thank you very, very much. The other part, there were things that were brought up that I hope will still be taken care of, like the use of emergency ACs. You know, so if something happens on a weekend and you've lost power and you need to put a window unit in, I understood they had it, but it wasn't on the agenda document for them. The only things that were on there besides those, besides the timeline, that really seemed to catch attention was the fencing and landscaping on the back and sides of homes, less than twenty-five percent or something like that. We're getting there, but we're not there yet because it really shouldn't be there at all, and it shouldn't be, you know, you've got people like us who have a property that you can see all around it. We shouldn't have to adhere to some of that. People don't have to do that now. So, and then finally, I do believe that if we're really serious about it, and all of us want to see it be successful, we've got to make, we've got to make some changes. We've got to really sit down and have a dialogue, do the workshops and whatever. Let's all talk through it and discuss it. And then let's do some massive education with the people of the town in the district, just in the district. And then what would really be good is to let them vote. Let, put it on the agenda, put it on for the vote in November, and let the people in the district vote for it. And I think if we do it right, and we deal with some of these restrictions and things, I think we may find that people are willing to be more, let's do it. Now, I said that was the last thing, but I will say this. I walk my dog quite a bit, and I don't know everybody in town. I know that's a shock, but I know faces. And almost to a person, as I'm walking the dog, I have asked, "What do you think about the historic district?"" And to a person, I keep hearing, "Well, I don't really know very much." So we've got some work to do, and thank you.
Pat Kirkman.
Well, the itinerary tonight's changed a little bit since we got notified that what was going to be discussed. So I won't bother with all of that. I'll give you a little history lesson. How's that? Because that's what I'm known for here. The twenty-nine years I've been in town is history and being passionate about the cemetery, and I'm not going to mention the cemetery to you tonight. Also about the, oh, I have to say this too, just so you understand where I'm coming from, which is not easy tonight for me, as it has been for the several years that I have stood before you to talk to you. Three months ago, I was diagnosed with a brain stroke. So part of my brain doesn't work like it used to, but it's okay. I'm not upset about it at all because I was through with all of that anyway until I got up here to say something. But the old, y'all help me along here. The building that we finally got the money for, the courthouse, I don't call it the courthouse. I call it the original name when it was built, which was the, come on, people. None of you remember what it was? Yeah, okay. All right. There we go. So those are two of my passions that you've heard about over the years, as I have stood here almost every meeting to say something about one or the other. So since I'm not going to talk about the stuff that everybody else seems to want to talk about, I will say, I'll give you a little history lesson on what's the word, and here we go, what the word salubrious means. It's been a hot topic around town the last couple of weeks, and thanks to one of our aldermen, it has been brought up to us. Salubrious is a word that means healthy and good, and something that is beneficial to you. And I think most of us have accepted that through the years. Well, actually, since seventeen sixty-nine was the first time it was mentioned by a fellow that you might have heard of named Joshua Potts, who had a little something to do with establishing this town. And so that word to describe this town of Southport, a place that feels like salubrious breezes, has been accepted and part of our motto for all of these years. So when it came up last meeting, I was at home watching this on TV, which many people do, and hey, y'all out there watching on TV, that I had the same reaction that the alderman sitting over here did. I said, "What?", as she did, and you can hear that if you want to go back and listen to last week, last month's meeting, and how all of that ten-minute conversation came up about what not to put on our signs that announce that this is Southport, the home of salubrious breezes. Well, the fellow who came over here, Joshua, and said that came from Wilmington, so we know about what to think about that anyway, right? But it did become part of what we say about our town, and it was adopted in seventeen ninety-two when we were Smithfield, the home of salubrious breezes. So let's don't do away with that altogether. It got through. You all voted on it last time. So it got through not to appear on our signs, so got that far. But let's hope that that'll be the end of taking salubrious out of Southport. I was going to say, and I'm now going to say it, maybe it got mixed up with that word salacious when we heard that it had sexual connotations. So that's salacious, not salubrious. Okay? Thank you.
Charles Drew.
My name's Charles Drew, and I reside at one twelve Park Avenue. I'm the chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I'd like to speak for a few minutes on changes in Southport. Couple years ago, there was a campaign launched in Southport. Signs, shirts, bumper stickers were branded throughout the community. Some of the people that have spoke tonight had those signs in their yards. "Don't change Southport. Let Southport change you." I begin to think of the many changes that I have seen in Southport just in my lifetime. I would have never thought that the frying-pan light ship would be docked in New York City. Never. But it's gone. I watched as the original Dozier Hospital was torn down. I would have never imagined in my lifetime that Whittler's Bench would not have a tree. Never would I have thought that. I would have never imagined someone turning the direction of travel on Short Street around. I would love if my granddaddy was here tonight, who drove that yacht basin three or four times a day. I'd love to hear his colorful words about Short Street being turned around. Changes. Here we are. The McCoy-Green Funeral Home, the oldest African-American funeral home probably in southeast United States, is today a shop with surfboards around it and a lifeguard chair out front. Charles Nelson McCoy and Henry and Josie May Green, who owned that funeral home, would roll over in their graves to see that building today. It looks like something that should be in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, instead of Southport. I've heard the statement over and over, everyone in Southport will do the right thing. We don't need historic preservation guidelines. Frankly, tonight, everyone will not do the right thing. And if everyone is willing to do the right thing, then my question tonight is, what is the problem? If everybody's willing to do the right thing in Southport, what is the problem with the regulations? That's all the Historic Preservation Commission has been trying to accomplish, is the right thing. The right thing is protecting our character, it's promoting our history, and it's preventing drastic change. Remember the signs? "Don't change Southport." The bumper stickers, the shirts, most of the people that live here today would not have wanted to live here when I was growing up. We had a fish factory. The odors were not pleasant. We had a crab factory at Kingsley and Bay. The odors and the sight was horrible. Pappy Stubbs lived on Short Street. He had a boatyard full of junk right across from the Barnes residence. Pulpwood Joe ran a logging business out of his home at the five-hundred block of Moore Street and parked his pulpwood trucks in his yard. Mr. Elijah Hewitt, who lived in the eight-hundred block of Caswell Avenue, painted his car with a paintbrush every year, sitting on a five-gallon bucket out beside the road, and he had a huge garden with chickens, geese, peacocks, and goats on Caswell Avenue. Bob Tharp lived- geese, peacocks, and goats on Caswell Avenue. Bob Tharp lived on Burrington Avenue, and he built motorized vehicles out of wheelbarrows, bathtubs, and 55-gallon drums, and most of the time led the Fourth of July parade in one of those vehicles. Wayne Hewitt, who was a Board of Aldermen member, ran his septic tank business out of his home on Burrington Avenue, parked his dump trucks and backhoes on the right of way. I went down Burrington Avenue yesterday, from where Wayne Hewitt lived to where Bob Tharp lived, every house on that street, with the exception of two, Ms. Kathleen Williamson's house and John Henry Johnson's house, has been demolished and torn down. Every one of those houses that were on that street have been altered and changed. I've told you tonight about some people that shaped this town into what it is today. I wonder what they would think about historic properties being changed and demolished in Southport. I wonder if this board before us changed their mind about the Brunswick County Courthouse that Ms. Kirkman spoke about tonight and decided to put a for sale sign up there because we need the revenue. And a developer came in here and bought the Brunswick County Courthouse, and they demolished it. I wonder what these people that I've just called their names would say about that building being destroyed. I remember one time there was talk about cutting down an oak tree. Leela Pickett said she would chain herself to the tree before she would let them cut it down. Those old timers were serious about not changing Southport. When I got hired with the city, Mayor Norman Holden told me, Charles, don't mess with trees, the yacht basin, the cemetery, the Whittler's Bench, and don't bother anybody's cat, and you'll work a long time for the city. Well, I'm on my 32nd year. I took Norman's advice. In closing tonight, our downtown is changing rapidly. The first 100 original lots that were laid off in this town have changed, some for the good and some for the bad. The longer we put off these Historic Preservation Commission guidelines and historic district overlay, the danger of change to Southport is lurking. Historic Preservation Commission has done their due diligence for three years. I counted it up, folks. We've held 56 public meetings in three years. Historic Preservation Commission has met 56 times. Where were all of these folks? Dr. Sheets was at our first meetings. He spoke. And some of the very things that Dr. Sheets spoke about, we incorporated them in the document. Things he asked us, Pete Haslip was there. Some of the things that Pete Haslip talked to us about, we incorporated them in the document. We've had 56 public meetings, two largely attended public forums. We've sent out two mass mailings to every citizen in this town, posted signs, done interviews with public, with news media, published minutes and meetings on the internet, even had televised meetings in this room. It's been on social media. We have met with the planning board. They held a public hearing. Board of Aldermen, citizens, we've had special called meetings. We have met with the State Historic Preservation Office several times, hired a consultant to assist us crafting the document. We've debated, we've rewrote, we've recommended, we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's. The Board of Aldermen tasked the Historic Preservation Commission with a job to do. This coming up month, September, will be three years ago, and we have completed our task. I want to say this, the fate of Southport is in the hands of each of you that sit at this table. The longer you put it off, the more time a developer or a builder can come in this town, flash their money, and change Southport forever. I've been told, calm down, calm down. It won't happen. It will happen. It has happened. It is happening, and it will continue unless the Board of Aldermen stop it by supporting historic preservation.
Kurt Sheets.
Hi, my name is Kurt Sheets. I live at 314 East Bay. I have a written little speech I was gonna say, but I find, maybe I need to go off script for just a second. This is a very emotional situation, and we're hearing all kinds of emotional comments from a lot of different people on both sides. And a lot of it, both sides have some good reason to be saying what they're saying. But this is a factual situation. There, we're all emotional about it, but this is a factual situation. There's a thing in America called property rights. We all want to save Southport, but this is about property rights and putting an HOA in an area that never had an HOA. So now I'm gonna go to my speech, but I felt like I needed to say, we're all emotional about this town. We're all emotional about how it looks. We all. But there's two sides to that. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to start by saying that I'm here to defend personal property rights. With that being said, I value and understand the importance of preserving our town's unique character, and I support efforts that will keep our community special. My concern is, not with the preservation itself, but with how the process is affecting homeowners like me. With all these regulations, I want to make, with all these regulations, if I want to make improvements that are safe, code compliant, and keep with the spirit of the neighborhood, I'm required to get a formal approval first before I can do that. This adds delays, cost, uncertainty, and in some cases, makes it harder to maintain my property at all. Ironically, that can lead to very deterioration of the property that we're all trying to prevent. Preservation works best when it partners with property owners, not when it becomes an obstacle to them. I believe we can protect what's historically significant without micromanaging every change. I also believe in fairness. I believe in fairness, not what someone's personal opinion is about what someone did with their personal property. This country was founded on the rights of personal property. If the town asks only private homeowners in the historic district to maintain certain historic standards for the public's benefit, the process should be efficient, free, and respectful of our time, the people you are asking to take on the burden. I'm not asking to tear down history. I'm asking for a process that respects history and the people who live in it. Let's focus on preserving the essential character of our town while giving residents the flexibility to maintain, improve, and modernize our homes without having to ask permission to do so. In closing, I want to let the HPC and the aldermen know one thing. This group is organized, prepared, and completely oppose this policy. Thank you.
Bonnie Bray.
... and there are lots of changes, you know, things that need to be fixed right away. This does not apply. So number two, it's been suggested that applicants for review, applications for review, or applicants for review will be charged upwards of $500 for the privilege. The Historic Preservation Commission never talked about fees during the entire three years. We did, however, discuss it at the second public hearing when it was, you know, someone said, how much are the fees gonna be? We voted, and one of our recommendations to the aldermen is that the application process, the whole process, is free. It's a $500. You know, the most that anybody charges is 10 or 25 or $50 in other towns that have historic preservation guidelines like this. But that doesn't cover the cost of it. So we recommend to the aldermen that it be free. Minor COAs, major COAs. Okay, number three, we also recommended that no references be made to side or rear views that are not visible from the street. Because they're off limits. The entire document is referencing what the changes are exterior changes that can be visible from the street. Nobody cares what's happening in your backyard. Nobody cares what's happening in your sideyard. I recognize that Buddy and Debbie have a lot of sideyard. Most people's sideyards are not visible from the street. These guidelines only apply to exterior permanent changes that are visible from the street. And then finally, another thing that came up at one of the meetings was the process was allowed to take up to 180 days. We got that down to 90 days. We checked, it's staff check, it's legally possible. We changed that, recommended to the aldermen, that it be a 90-day process. Now, one thing about certificates of appropriation, minor certificates of appropriation are minor because they go to staff. Staff is as familiar with the ideas expressed in this, which are all designed to have properties be compatible with each other in their own neighborhoods. It's not about imposing onerous burdens on people in their own neighborhoods. It's about make, giving people choices for a range of choices, educating, helping people make the changes they want to make in a way that it's compatible with the rest, with their neighbors. This is protecting, it's not pitting neighbor against neighbor. It's helping neighbors do the right thing within a range, a very broad range. So if you have a minor thing, then you sit down with staff, they go over all the possibilities, and you leave out of there, and you're done. You can go on about your business, make your minor changes. If you have a major change, it involves a building permit, nine times out of 10 anyway. So this, this overlay is the last thing that happens. You get your building permit, you go in and you, you make the decision about how, what materials you're gonna use, what, what it's gonna look like, what is, you know, how it affects the existing situation. It's all about helping people do the right thing. And everybody, as Charles pointed out, everybody has said, everybody who stood up here tonight said, we want to do the right thing. We just don't want to be told what to do. These are guidelines. There's standards to follow. It's a range of things that, it's not tied to, there are so many things that this document is not. And it's because the Historic Preservation Commission has been developing these guidelines for three years, 56 times we met. We went over everything line by line. We didn't get everything right. The workshop is a golden opportunity to change what we didn't get right. So we'll all sit down, we'll, we'll have a chance to read the actual document today before the workshop. And then the other thing to remember is if we still don't get it right, we can change it. It can be changed. It's a living, breathing document that if, if we all think, okay, we agree on these standards, and it looks like a good thing, and the first case we have blows that all to kaplooey. We go, okay, it's just like the text amendments. We have the text amendments tonight. It's just like that. You have a UDO, you think you get it right, and then car insurance decides to raise their building and put up a modern structure. It's, it, you know, even, I mean, there are so many things about the commercial, anyway, done. Give it a chance. Give it a chance. It's all done in the right spirit. Nobody wants to tell somebody else to do. I get what Kurt said. It's, people have their property rights. If my husband was here tonight, he would, he would, you know, be saying the same thing that Kurt's saying. We all have a stake in what Southport is going to be for the future, and this is a big chance to get it right. Please, give it a chance. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you just wait one minute while I consult with a lawyer on something, and then I'll call the next person up? Madam Clerk, could you just wait one minute while I consult with a lawyer on something, and then I'll call the next person up? Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, we're ready to go.
Cheryl Lapala.
Hello. My name is Cheryl Lapala, and I live at 316 West Brunswick Street on the alley. And I also have a rental property on Lord Street. My first home that I renovated in the historic district, I've done three, it was at the corner of Caswell and Moore, and it was next door to Betty and Hoyle Dozier, and it was covered in brick, two-story structure. We ended up buying it. It was really too big, but my husband wanted it at the time, so we purchased it. I was talking to Hoyle over the fence one day about the house, and he said, "Well, you know, they covered that house in brick in the 1950s to make it more energy efficient." And it looked like something that belonged, like in Charlottesville, Virginia, kind of Monticello-ish. And so I called the seller, the house was River Pilot Toby Thompson's. So I called his daughter Jean, who sold it, and I said, "Jean, do you have any pictures of the house, you know, in, you know, the earlier days?" And she said, "Yeah," and she sent me this picture of this one-story clapboard cottage. It was the most charming thing I'd ever seen. So I knew that underneath that brick veneer was this beautiful cottage. I then saw a videotaped interview that was given, Toby Thompson gave, to the Southport Historic Society. And he said, "You know, that the innermost part of that house was built in 1826, and it was made of ship's timbers." So Boo McKee, I called Boo McKee, and he came over, and him and I got on our bellies and crawled under that house, and sure enough, the floor joists had all these notches in them that were not just normal lumber. They had actually come from a shipwreck or from some salvaged lumber from a ship. So we went on to remove that brick veneer, and we restored that house as closely as we could to that one-story cottage. It had been blown up, which is really not something you want to do, and that's in the guidelines, I know. But the point was that I did not need anybody to give me approval to do that. I wanted to do it, and I took it as close as I could to what it was originally. We had a metal detector. We found World War II and Civil War uniform buttons with NC on them with a starburst pattern. Pete Hart looked it up in his book, he was helping me, confirmed it was a Confederate uniform button. So I went on to restore two other houses after that. The most recent one is on Brunswick Street, and we bought it 10 years ago. It was a big box with a one-story porch. Well, you can look down the street and see the yacht basin, so my husband said, "Let's put a double-decker porch on it, Charleston-style. That is my favorite part of the house. I can look down and see the yacht basin." But you know what? If I bought this house and wanted to do that, and these regulations were in place, I wouldn't be able, I wouldn't be allowed to add a second-story double-decker porch, because it would have changed the front of the house. I think the house looks much better. It's more valuable. And so if I were not allowed to do that, that's what's called a taking, and that's, that's private property rights, that I ought to be able to improve my house the way I want to. And these proposed guidelines, they're not guidelines. They're going to be regulations if they're passed. I actually would say that they have valuable guidance, and I pretty much would follow them when I do my renovations, but they should be guidance. And we already have a National Register Historic District. We have a historic society that has a plaque, a plaque program, and we, you research the history of your house all the way back to the initial builder, and they'll give you a plaque. So we have a system for helping our historic preservation efforts, and we have these guidelines, which certainly could be adopted just as guidelines to provide anybody when they go through the permitting process. And, you know, perhaps if you, you know, if you really wanted to, you could add on to the historic plaque system. You could say, "If anyone in the district like Lo or Karen would like to voluntarily adopt those regulations into their deed for future conventions, perhaps we could put a little gold star on the historic plaque, recognizing that these people have voluntarily offered to do this." Because one observation I have made is that the majority of the people who are in favor of the historic district do not live there. The people who are opposed to the historic district live there. And this is kind of what hap, why these people want to get de-annexed. You know, all of a sudden, it's like, what's the point? So I had a, I'm a broker with Southport Realty, and I showed about five houses to a couple, couple weeks ago. One was on West West Street, had a big lot by Southport standards. The house was like a one-story bungalow, and it was typical style where it was long and skinny, because, you know, they kept building on. They probably, you know, you had the detached kitchen, so then they enclosed that part, you know, the annex between them, and then built on and built on. It had a large area to the right. The square footage was like 1,400 square feet. And my client said, "You know, we really need a little more square footage than that." They said, "Can we put a garage with an apartment above it in the back?" And I thought, "Oh, boy. What do I have to disclose here, because you want to make sure everybody knows everything up front?" I said, "Well, you know, I just got back from a trip, and I had a letter in the mail about the proposed historic district, and I went through the standards and I read them. And basically, it says that anything that you build on in the back cannot be taller or wider than the original structure." And, you know, that is desirable, because you don't want a big, huge building in the back with this little cottage. But the fact is, the property values have gotten so high in the historic district that you've got to be able to, to max out the building on that property. And, you know, that's going to prevent, present a real hardship for some people. And so when I went back, we have a system called Broker Bay, where when you show a property, you provide feedback to the listing agent so they can provide it to their, their sellers. And so I put in the comment line, I said, "Buyers were very interested, but were concerned that they would not be able to build on up out because of the proposed historic district regulations." Now, if that was your home, how would you feel? So I would just, I guess I just want to reiterate that I don't think the people here are the problem. I think we've all respectfully and very tastefully done the best we can renovating our homes. And I think that at minimum, this needs to be put to a vote of the people who are affected in the historic district. But all, by all means, the documents that have been developed, I mean, the inventory of homes, the history of Southport, the standards, adopt them as just guidance. And anytime anybody applies for a permit, give them that guidance. Let them know about the historic plaque program. Let's revive the National Register Historic District. That goes way beyond what this district is proposing. I really don't think that we have a problem. The prob, where this all started was the car insurance building, and some people not being happy with that. And I do not see anything in these regulations that would prevent that. I mean, there's some general things about the commercial buildings that they need to have sort of the same window size openings as the, the ones that are next to them. But I really don't, I really don't think this is going to achieve or would have prevented something like that building from, from happening. So adopt, adopt these as guidance, and so you're not wasting three years' worth of hard work, but we don't want to be told what to do with our homes. Thank you.
I have an email sent in. Dear Mayor and Board of Aldermen, I am a new member of the Historic Preservation Commission in an alternate position. I do not live in the historic district, but I, together with my brother and sister, own a home at 414 West West Street, a home that has been in our family since it was built in 1913, where my mother currently resides. Why do I have a strong and passionate interest in preserving the historic district, what is left of it? Because I have deep roots of this town. My family has lived and had businesses in the historic district of Smithville, Southport, since the town was founded in 1792, 233 years. My sixth great-grandfather, Charles Gauz, who together with Joshua Potts, William Epsy Lord, Robert Howe Jr., and Benjamin Smith were named as commissioners to see that town, see that the town was set up. I feel that having the Historic Preservation Commission guidelines will pay, play a crucial role in safeguarding and preserving Southport's invaluable historical and cultural heritage for the enjoyment and benefit of those living in the district right now, as well as future generations. Without some form of guidelines, any builder, developer could slip in and raise historic homes and businesses, buildings, and construct modern homes and buildings that take away from the historic ambience of Southport. Therefore, we must safeguard the unique character and historical significance of Southport's historic district now, before it's too late. Southport has already lost too many historic homes and commercial buildings because there is no guidelines in place. The town can't afford to lose anymore. Do the guidelines need to be strict and stifling? No. The HPC has embraced citizen input and has listened to and incorporated their suggestions since the draft of the guidelines was posted. You can't please everyone, but the town needs guidelines to protect the historic district, because Southport is going to lose its historic charm, history, and culture if some level of guidance are not put into place. I have lived in Southport for 69 years, and it is nauseating to think of the number of buildings and homes that have been raised over the years because of no guidelines. It worries me that, should my family sell our family cottage on West West Street in the future, that someone would purchase it and tear it down and build a monstrosity on that beautiful lot and change the character of the street. Something needs to be done, starting now. Thank you. Catherine G. Huffham, 40 Forest Oaks Drive, Southport, North Carolina.
Is that it on that topic, ma'am?
Historic, yes.
Okay, for the people before you leave, if you decide to leave, once again, we're going to have this workshop. We're going to have all of you there. We're going to have all of the people that are involved in this there, so we can try to figure out where the compromise might be on a variety of different topics. We'll get you, we'll post it on the city website, the complete number of changes that have been accepted by the historic committee already, and then we'll talk about any other changes. Just to make it easier for that meeting, not a requirement, just to make it easier for the meeting. If you have some thought that you want to convey and you think it requires some kind of legal review, if you could send it to, we're going to put this on the website, but, I drew my glasses, they're there. You can send your thoughts to comms, C-O-M-S, at thecityofSouthport.com. So if you send it to that, we'll send it, once again, we'll post it on the website on the front page. If you gave us your thoughts earlier, we could then review to make sure that they're legal before we get into a meeting, and I or somebody else makes a mistake in saying, "Yeah, that's a great idea, but we just can't legally do it." So I just throw that out for you. And with that, I want to make sure that you all understand that, well, it was the mayor who made a decision to postpone the vote on this and take it off the agenda. It was done with the entire board. They all were given the information about it. They all had the opportunity to talk to me about it, and this is a united thing that we collectively thought were just not quite there yet. So I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. And with that, Madam Clerk, the next topic, ma'am?
Okay, I have Angela Collins.
Actually, why don't we take a three-minute break, so if people want to leave, they can.
Everybody be careful in this weather going home.
The meeting back to order, if everybody would take their seats, please. Madam Clerk?
Angela Collins.
Good evening, everyone. I always pick the great meetings to come to. Um, I want to ban golf carts in Southport, just kidding. Um, I had to bring some humor in tonight because it was, it was a rough one sitting there. No, I, um, on the, first of all, thank you all for your time. And Frank, I've never met you, I don't know you from Adam, but I heard that you're not rerunning again, but I want to say thank you for your service to the city of Southport. I appreciate that. I know that, uh, it's not easy being one of the seven. And I, I, but I watched people come in at night and shake your hand like you were the governor, so you've made an impact, so, but, um, I, but thank you, sir. Um, the reason I'm here tonight, um, first of all, I'm Angelo Collins, I live at eleven oh seven North Castle Avenue. Um, the reason I'm here tonight is we have a drain issue where I live. Now, we all know September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four was a day like no other, unmentionable rains like today, and, um, a lot of the town flooded. Um, but, um, when I first moved here, I was, my, the houses behind me weren't in yet, and the townhouses on Trevally Court were not done there yet. So, you know, now comes September the sixteenth, flood, so everybody goes into protect, protect their house mode. So the houses at three hundred, three oh two and three oh four, South Eleventh Street, put a berm behind their fence the whole way down and put a berm, uh, like a big U. The problem now is every time it rains, and I can't wait to get home tonight, my garage floods now. Um, and on top of that, the townhomes have got a drainage ditch that drops out to the back of my property. Now, I will let you know, I didn't come here saying, please help me, I will, I will tell you what I've done. I did try to go talk to the HOA, and the HOA president at the time told me that drain was not their problem. She said, it's not my problem, we're not going to deal with it. Okay, so I called his developer, I called, um, Dream Finders Home, talked to somebody in Wilmington, started talking about the drain, they ghosted me, stopped talking to me. I'm trying to find a solution, but it's not fair that my house eleven oh seven and my neighbor eleven oh nine flood the way it does now. We're not in a flood zone, okay? When that's, and then when I built my house, um, Colleen, you know, he worked with my builder, we're on, we're on a raised slab, if I'd have gone another, another brick up, I would start flooding Ms. Reed, who has been in Southport all her life, and she's eighty-seven years old. So is that fair for me to come in and flood their yard? No. But now that since they put the berm in and protecting their houses, they're forcing water onto my property and flooding my, me and my neighbor. There is a solution, and I feel honestly, I will tell you, I talked to, I talked to Nate, went up to Nate and talked to him up in, in, up, up at the town hall, and I really thought of this after we spoke, Nate, to be honest with you, because you gave me a lot to think about. There's one solution that would solve it completely, and I feel like it falls on the townhomes because they're dumping the water on my property, but there's no, the thing I haven't mentioned is there's no drain back there. We need a stormwater drain in the back of that property because the, the water does rush off Eleventh Street, it rushes off North Castle, it comes by my house and funnels them between my house, I watch it funnel down through the, through the lots because they've all been, you know, developed, so there's nothing there to stop the water, I can watch it rush, rush down, but it rushes to the back of my property and then floods. I've had to replace, every time my garage floods, I lose, I've lost two refrigerators and two freezers. Now, I've, you know, the flood, I did file my flood insurance, but I can't, every time I lose some, I can't flood it. I can't, you know, keep filing, you're going to lose your insurance. I realize where I moved to, I know Southport, I love it here, I would love to come in and see the fish factory and that, that's what, I, I'm more North Carolinian, I grew up in that, you know, so I'm just asking the board for help now. And what I'm asking is somebody that needs to be held accountable because there is an issue. And my house keeps being affected, and I guarantee you, my wife's freaking out because my phone's in the car and I'm here, but I, you know, I just, you know, I really want something done. And now that we're getting into hurricane season again, that's what scares me the most. So, but it is a simple fix, a storm drain to be put in, and then a, a stormwater drain put in, a sizable one to handle the water flow that goes back there. You're putting, you know, and like I, like I told the builder, you're putting our water back there, but you're not taking it anywhere, you're putting it on my property. And they, you know, and I, and I talked to them like, you know, a person, I didn't, there was no screaming and hollering, I was looking for a solution. So this is my last stop, I'm asking for the city to, to whatever you can, Mr. Mayor, or, or Noah, whatever y'all can do, you know, make something happen, I, I, you know, but I hope it happens sooner than later because, you know, it's, you know, it's a dream, my house is my dream, and I built it because I, what I wanted, and I just, I'm tired of seeing it flood every time, especially for something, you know, everybody's pushing the water onto my property in eleven oh nine. So, thank you so much for your time, I hope you get an opportunity to, to, um, you know, get that address, knowing, you know, and I do, I do want to say something, if any of you, any of you aldermen want to come by and look, please, my door's always open, I'll, I can give you iced tea or something stiff to drink, and we can go back and walk the alleyway and do it, because the first time I met Karen, she said, let me put eyes on it, I want to see what you're talking about. And I thought that was the greatest thing in the world because she could actually see what I'm talking about. And that, I think sometimes a picture paints a thousand words, so thank y'all so much for your time.
Sir, I'm going to make a comment, but I don't want you to respond back to me, okay? That's the rules. Um, we, we hear you, the, the city manager hears you, and somebody will get back to you, and we'll see what we can do for you, okay?
I'm peeking at the manager, I'm peeking at the manager literally writing an email about it right now.
So.
What, what was, I'm sorry, ma'am?
I said, I'm peeking at the manager literally writing an email about it right now.
Okay. Next, ma'am?
James Poppy.
Good evening, alderman. James Poppy, sixty-one seventy-four Cottage Creek Road. Am I, I am here tonight at the request of our mayor and our liaison to the ABC Board, I sit on the ABC Board for the past two and a half years. These last few months have been very interesting, and I was asked to share some of the things that are going on. You don't, when you walk into the store and you see barrels on the sales floor, those were barrels that were purchased by our store general manager, Todd. Todd was in Kentucky this spring, and I think he purchased four more barrels. Those barrels come to us specifically made for our store. They have our name on the bottle itself, so Todd gets to go into Kentucky, tough job, but he does a great job at it. And so speaking of bourbon, I had a question this week, what is a bourbon drop versus a bourbon raffle? So if you've not been by the store when one of those events were taking place, it's very, very eye-opening. We started with what's called a bourbon, bourbon raffle about two years ago, whereas Todd would send out an email on our list telling the customers that we would have a bourbon raffle, say Tuesday at nine thirty in the morning. And the last one, which was held in December this last year, after the announcement went out on Tuesday morning, there were about two hundred and fifty people in the parking lot, in the warehouse. It was very, very uncomfortable, to say the least. So we, we quickly, we did great business that day. The people are given a ticket, they're allowed to come into the area where these rare and hard-to-get-your-hands-on bourbons are sold, and they get one ticket to buy one bottle, and then they're out, hey, and away they go. So it's phenomenal how popular this has become. It hasn't slowed down any, three weeks ago, on a Monday morning at four in the morning, Todd sends out an email listing about fifteen or so items that he's going to put on the shelf at nine, and people can come in at nine and they get to buy one bottle of that section. There were over a hundred people in, in the parking lot that morning, that email went out at four in the morning on Monday. And, and so it, and the reason it went out in such short order is we want to control the, um, we want to keep it to Brunswick County. For the big drops where we'd send out like a week's notice, we're getting people from Charlotte and Fayetteville and Raleigh coming down trying to cherry pick, you know, the one bottle of Pappy Van Winkle on the shelf, so. Anyhow, we'll continue with the drops going forward, they're very successful. I went to the annual ABC convention on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of July, it was in Greensboro, I went with Todd Dunn, our, our store manager, store general manager, and I was a little skeptical, to be honest with you, I mean, this is a group of seven hundred people that I don't know. Well, let me tell you, Todd knows most of them, with his, his years at our store and his years as a, um, technical provider, he was working on POS systems before he came to work for our store. He know, and, and just, he's, he's the most humble man you could ever know, but, but he wasn't walking up shaking hands, people were walking up to him shaking hands, which was very cool to be. So in the process of this meeting, I filled out a couple of forms going into it back in May, wound up on a ballot that I was kind of like, yeah, there's no way I'm going to get on this thing, and so I wound up running unopposed, and on the twenty-ninth became a member of the Board of Directors for the North Carolina ABC Association. What that means, I'm not quite sure yet, but I went to the, went to the meeting, we elected the new president and vice president and treasurer. And, uh, once again, I want to thank Frank for his support with our ABC Board, he shows up to our monthly meetings and gives us sound advice when we need it, and it's been a great experience being on the board, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sue Hodgson. I want to talk about something different from most of your comments you've heard tonight. I am Sue Hodgson, I live at six oh eight Cottage Point Way here in Southport. For some time, our citizenry has heard discussion from this board about I and I, infiltration and inflow during Southport's merger with Brunswick County for our water and sewer system, and now with other waste and stormwater concerns. My comments today concern the actions of and comments by city leadership, this body, at its first meeting this month on August fourth. Some of those were what I call a different categorization of I and I, inappropriateness and ignorance. Let me explain. Regarding inappropriateness, the only agenda item for the meeting was a discussion about the positioning of the Animal Protective Services Department within city government. At the beginning of that item, interim manager Saldos spoke about the need to take care to separate out discussion regarding animal protective services between the position and the city's O chart versus the persons and personalities. Starting at about the twenty-eight minute mark of the meeting, that advice was thrown straight under the bus. Statements very quickly devolved into personnel conversation and berating an individual that had already left city employment. As soon as those statements began, the interim manager could have and should have taken the conversation back and stopped personnel discussions. It didn't happen. It moved into a who did what to whom, and who's done it better, whose feelings are hurt, who felt attacked. It wasn't about the job and functioning of APS, it was about people. It became a pylon on a departed employee whom aldermen had requested to be there to answer questions about city services. The discussion brought in the topic of our town's compassion for the protection of animals, including pets, where we sometimes have to take extraordinary measures when the animals are found injured or sick. Alderman Kelly spoke about her issues with the city spending money on people's pets, saying, aren't citizens of Southport not responsible pet owners? Don't people know when they get pets, it's expensive? With any respect due and hopefully misunderstood, that came across tone deaf and unawares of the totality of the constituency she's sworn to protect and care about, and further unaware of the contingencies just like that, that any municipal budget must address. On any given day, there are people in Southport who perhaps are not emotionally, physically or financially able to make decisions about and provide monetary care for a pet. It does not mean that we should not make a way for them, not help them because they're less fortunate than we. Was it being inferred that we should euthanize an animal whose owner can't reimburse the city for their beloved pet's kenneling or emergency services? I hope we'd agree that's unthinkable. We're known for caring about our pets. Many, many of us in town know folks more by their dogs or cats' names than they do the individuals' names. So please, let's take a bit more compassion, compassionate than bottom dollar approach to the discussion of animal services. There was a discussion of the former employee's placement in the PD, inclusive of the mayor, right down to this person being put in the O chart above sworn officers for no reason other than her salary. Again, inappropriate comments and another missed opportunity to shut down personnel discussion. As the back and forth continued about the person, not the position, anyone seeing the tape can see that the interim manager leaned over and spoke to Ms. Kelly, she seemed to ask a question, got confirmation from the interim, and within seconds, she made a motion to call the previous question. This is not a well-known parliamentary procedure, that was apparent. I don't think I've ever seen it used in Southport. Alderman Davis found that out, too, when the motion was explained, and she was told by the mayor that her desire for more information, more discussion, would not be addressed. The full board was informed that that motion cuts any further discussion off at the knees. It stifles all discussion, stifles open government for the public. I dare say we'll see that motion used again now from this table. Bottom line, had all this personnel discussion been cut off early when it first took that turn, the inappropriateness and the embarrassment would have never happened for either the former employee or the city. I do want to also speak to one of the actually appropriate discussion points during the APS wrangle. It was about grants that APS had previously facilitated that were now no longer available to the city. Alderman Lay asked, where did the money go? Why aren't we getting it anymore? I'm not sure that he got a proper explanation, it didn't come from the interim, interim manager or any current staff that were involved in the discussions, so I want to add two cents into that. Through my own work with grant applications, I can say that grantors use a Through my own work with grant applications, I can say that grantors use a point, a grading system for their awards. One of those graded areas relates to what other funding to which an applicant may have access. So, obviously APS, when it was a freestanding city department, would qualify for more grant funding than when a position inside a good-sized, well-funded police department. We know this from other grants the city has pursued. We oftentimes stand better chances being a small fish in a big pond. Maybe that'll make some basic common sense about one aspect of how grants are determined. Not taking anything away from the collaboration that may exist between all Brunswick's municipalities and county functions, and I'm grateful that the county is approachable in this manner. I'd like to see Southport get as much in grants on its own, in animal services and anything else we pursue, rather than having to go down the road hat in outstretched hand. The other I word I mentioned up front, ignorance. And I use that term not as a slap in the face or derogatorily to any particular individual at the table. Maybe historical ignorance might sit better. On the meeting recording, it appears, and I'm glad that Ms. Kirkman was here, and we got a great history lesson from her and from Charles tonight. On the recording, it appears that she, Ms. Kelly may have been thinking that salubrious, she made, she asked that the word salubrious not be considered for our welcome signs because it had sexual connotation. Really? The mayor and a couple others laughed, and I ask again, really? Like so many other things around and in our town, it's become quite the talk now on social media. So, again, embarrassment has spread. I hope Ms. Kelly meant salut, salacious in that as a reason for that, though I don't know why anyone would think that that would be part of a town slogan, its tagline. But my point is no one at this table called her on this. I hope it's because everyone was in full shock that it would actually be said. There could have been a gently educated correction, including a quick Google definition. I'm remembering Ms. Kirkman actually saying, not too long ago, before you, that electeds should stay off their phones and be a part of what's going on in the room during meetings. And I largely agree with that. But in this case, frankly, Ms. Kelly was, by the tape, on her phone a big portion of the meeting on the fourth, and could have Googled the word quickly herself before she even brought this up. Nevertheless, I want to bring attention to the fact, like Ms. Kirkman did, that salubrious breezes has a descriptive phrase for Southport for long, long before any of us were here, long before the last administration, long before we started using it as our town slogan. Joshua Potts lived in Halifax County, North Carolina. Many references to Potts can be found in the colonial and state records of North Carolina. After the American Revolution, he moved to Wilmington, becoming a merchant, lawyer, surveyor, and broker, and became involved in town government through his business and professional activities. After a debilitating illness, a friend of Potts suggested a respite and brought him on his own packet from Wilmington, making his customary stopover at Fort Johnston. He felt the sea air would be beneficial to Potts. Potts befriended the soldiers at the fort and the river pilots in town. From this vacation trip, Joshua Potts returned to Wilmington, Wilmington, fully recovered from his illness, and gave all the credit to the salubrious breezes he enjoyed at Fort Johnston. This information comes from the book Joshua's Dream, written by Susie Carson. So, you see, we recognize salubrious as a tagline, so to speak, all the way back to the late seventeen hundreds, to our towns having these salubrious, not salacious breezes. As well, I call your attention to an edition of the State Port Pilot from January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, the opinion page. The editorial of that date recognizes our salubrious breezes, as does another item on that same page. A letter to the editor coined "moving forward," quote, unquote, states that, quote, "We all need to take a deep breath of our salubrious breezes." The writer was Rich Alt, newly-elected Alderman. So, I'm hoping that this signed discussion that included a motion to not have anything referencing the breezes that are so recognized, well, by almost everyone in the room today, and that I understand got removed from today's agenda, will resurge so that discussion can continue with participation as a town to honor, rather than toss out any mention of the history behind this most appropriate tagline. I wish you all a deep drawl on those salubrious breezes when we leave here tonight, for your health and happiness, like they became for Joshua Potts. Thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk.
Okay. My name is Derek Parker. I live on two oh one West Eleven Street. I was informed that y'all will be voting on non-city functions being, having to pay five hundred dollars to get the streets blocked off. Well, I'm the vice president of Southport Unity Committee, and we do a lot of stuff with kids. And the reason being, we need to be blocked off because they're running back and forth, and we try to keep them blocked, but I don't see where that would benefit the city. Can I get a reason why that would happen for, for, for that vote?
Unfortunately, sir, during public comment, we don't debate people back and forth because it spirals off.
Okay.
But what I will tell you is, after the meeting, we'll talk in one-on-one, and we'll give you the answers.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I've got one for the event ordinance. Do you want to wait for the public hearing for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then... They don't want to speak. They don't want to speak. Okay, so I just have Kathy Dudley and then the Rich Bandera, but those are both for the public hearings. I don't think I've missed anybody else. Is that correct? Nobody else?
Is anybody who signed up for public comment and has not had a chance to speak yet? Not seeing any? We're good to go, ma'am?
Yeah, we're good to go.
Okay. So, the next topic is the approval of the agenda. I entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda, or any changes to it?
Yes, I would like the indulgence of the board to move item four to item one, if that would be possible.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any conversation? Not hearing any? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. The next thing is the approval of the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any comment on that topic? Not seeing any? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Next topic will be the new number one, which is the zoning text amendment, special events, ZTA twenty-four oh five.
Matt, question, do I need to move away from the table for this?
I don't think you need to move away. Just, just sit there. Yeah. I don't think she has a conflict. We're not voting anyways.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Board of Aldermen. We had a public hearing and staff presentation on May eighth about this text amendment for special event standards that was triggered by a bed and breakfast that was requesting approval for the, to be able to host weddings with up to a hundred and fifty guests. So, staff worked with a planning board committee and came up with, proposed to do an accessory use for special events in non-residential establishments. These events are going to be more intense in a use than otherwise permitted for daily operations. After the presentation and the public hearing, the staff voiced concerns and hesitations about adding this special event as a new use. So, the table, the discussion was tabled, and at the last meeting, Alderman Motteller called the item back at the July tenth regular meeting. So, staff would like to offer some options for moving forward. First would be to deny the proposed amendment written and request that staff submit a new text amendment to include standards specific and only for bed and breakfast establishments, or the Aldermen can propose some language that we can consider, again, for and only for bed and breakfasts. We can refer the proposed text amendment back to the planning board with direction given to staff, or we can deny, or you, I apologize, can deny the proposed text amendment and leave the ordinance as written. So, I will leave that up to your discussion.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Meehan, for your contribution. The reason I asked for this to come back is because we need to make a decision, one that I personally am not in favor of the specialized events language. It creates a new accessory use standard in the UDO. Later this evening, we're going to be talking about an events process for policy and that sort of thing. That really is what we need for that conversation, not this in the UDO. But what, as Mo said, the, this conversation came out of a special use permit to the Board of Adjustment, where the bed and breakfast wanted to do events up to a hundred and fifty participants, and then they also wanted to do just outside events, up to thirty people, like a dinner or something that would have just been like if you were an events venue. So, for me, and I have given y'all a copy of an alternative, what happened was, what happened was, was at the Board of Adjustment meeting, I attended that meeting, and they basically voted against allowing events at the bed and breakfast that require, that was requesting it, and with that caveat of that no ordinance existed for guidance. And so, this, that's sort of my takeaway from it, that we need to put something in the code. We have, as an example, for short-term rentals, we address special events regarding short-term rentals in the code. Enforcement's a different conversation, but it is addressed. It's not addressed, you have in front of you, I think, the language that I was proposing, which was to, to just specifically address the issue at bed and breakfast, because that's what this came out of. And so, that my conversation, and Brady has reviewed this, just so y'all know, this language, Brady has, this actually came, this is Brady's updated language for it. Special events such as weddings, dinners, and other small gatherings for the benefit of overnight guests are allowed. Special event capacity shall not exceed the number of overnight guests registered at the bed and breakfast. In addition to that, would be adding a definition under the definition sections, eight point three in the UDO, which would just define a special event as activities held in venues, whereas the event is secondary to the venue's primary land use, special events included, but not limited to weddings, receptions, and dinners. So, that's just a definition for the word special event. So, and I would entertain questions if anybody, my reasoning for that, I'm not even, I'm off script, my reasoning for that is because we need something in the ordinance that addresses what's allowed and not that it's vacant. This has come up now, and we need to add this, I feel like. So, that's, that's my conversation.
So, before we can have a conversation, we have to have a second to the motion.
Motion, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to make, I can go ahead and make the motion. It would, the motion was to call, I would like to make a motion to call a public hearing for the new text amendment language at the next regular meeting.
And Alderman Motteller, one thing I would suggest, I'm assuming the planning board hasn't seen it or made a recommendation on...
Correct, correct.
Then we need...
Would you rather it be sent back to them?
I think it should, just to go and have that whole process, and hopefully that can still coincide with it coming back to you all in September.
Okay, well, okay.
Or maybe not, but...
Well, let's do this and forget the motion I just said. And then, now Brady, you changed on me. It's all good. I'd like to make a motion to send this language to the planning board for their review and feedback to us.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any? All in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye. Is there any opposed? Not hearing any? It's unanimous, thank you. The next topic is the public hearing, event ordinance, and process improvement, community relations.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the board. I'm here to reintroduce the special event ordinance discussed at the August fourth meeting. The purpose of this ordinance is to bring structure, transparency, and consistency to how we manage events in Southport, especially those that impact traffic, city services, or public spaces. This is something that we've been hearing about for quite some time from downtown businesses, nonprofit partners, and our own city departments. Under this ordinance, the Community Relations Department would serve as the central point of contact for event organizers. We would then coordinate and review the event with police, fire, public works, parks, and recreation, and other departments as needed, so that each event is evaluated for safety, logistics, and resource needs. It is important to note, there would only be one new fee, a one hundred dollar application fee, which would be waived for city cosponsored events. Any other costs, such as police staffing, barricade sanitation, or other services, are not new fees. They already exist in our adopted fee schedule and vary based by the size and needs of an event. Event-specific safety resources like tents, cooking rules, or fire inspections are set by the fire department and are not part of this ordinance. This ordinance is not intended to make it harder to hold events. It's about making it easier for organizers to know exactly what's expected and for the city to plan and communicate effectively. Thank you.
Are there questions for Elena?
This is a public hearing. Do you want to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion open, public hearing.
There's a second? There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Not hearing any? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is open. Is there anybody here who wants to speak on this topic?
Good evening. Kathy Dudley, one oh five North Caswell. I'm also the administrator for the Friends of the Maritime Museum, and tonight, I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Friends of the North Carolina Maritime Museum, and like to submit the following in regards to this. Over the years, we have held many events in city facilities and city property, from lectures, fundraising events in the community center, and Indian Trail Meeting Hall, to concerts on the lawn, at Fort Johnston Lawn. Overall, we support the effort to make the permitting process clearer and fairer, but as with any ordinance, it's always in the details and how it's implemented that it can have a big impact. We have two concerns. One is the fee proposed, and I'm glad that Elena provided some more clarification, and I bring that to bear in my comments, but the fees proposed and... I'm bringing that to bear in my comments, but the fees proposed in consideration for how nonprofits are treated. As for the fees, it was not clear when I read through the document, because many of the fees were highlighted and it read as if they were new fees. But it was not clear when or what would trigger some of the proposed fees. For example, again, in how I read it and way it was highlighted within the document, there was a, it appeared to be a proposed permit fee for temporary membrane structures, tents, and canopies. This past June, for example, the Friends sponsored a concert on the lawn with the back porch rockers. We erected three tents to provide shades for our volunteers and members, since we used the event to raise money and have a raffle. If the permit fee for, was per tent, that event would have cost us $775. Again, I understand that needs to be clarified, but this is how we read the ordinance. That was a $100 application fee plus $225 for each tent. This is an event in which we raised only $1,200. So, you know, most of what we had raised would have gone to fees for that event. If, if it is just a matter that is just a per event fee, the total cost still would have been at $325 or about a fourth of what we raised. Which brings us to a second point, which is consideration for nonprofits. More specifically, considering reduced fees or waivers for Southport-based nonprofits. Many nonprofits, including the Friends, operate with limited budgets while providing, while working to provide valuable services and programs that directly benefit the community. A reduced or waived fee policy would help stretch our limited resources while still ensuring the city receives fair compensation for its services. We believe such a policy would encourage more community-based events and strengthen the city's reputation as a place that values public service, volunteering, and civic engagement. The Friends of the Maritime Museum have always had a very good relationship with the city, and we very much appreciate the support we receive from the city and from the community at large. We thank you for and appreciate your consideration of this request and be happy to provide more information if needed. Thank you.
Is there any others, people in the audience who would like to speak on this topic? Is there anybody? Yes. Derek, do you have any other additional stuff you want to speak on this topic? Would you come up to the microphone so that when, you have to do that so the people at home can hear you.
But we are nonprofit and that would take a big chunk of anything we make. We don't have great big events. Our events are, for us, it's big, but it's not that big. We don't make much money. So a charge for us would like kind of knock us in the dirt for the things we plan to do for the future. That's pretty much all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Is there any comments from the board?
Motion to come out of public comment?
What?
Can we do a, come out of public comment?
Yes.
Motion to come out of public comment?
Second.
We're coming out of public comment so we can talk. So, all, is there any comments about coming out of comment? Not hearing any? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous, we're now out of public comment. Is there any comments from the board as we go forward?
That instinctually, we should have some kind of a list of contributing nonprofits in our town and have a waiver list for those groups.
Anybody else?
First, I want to say I appreciate all the work Elena's done on this. Let me start by saying that. And I'm certainly in favor of creating an events permit process, for sure. The, I just had a couple of observations. One, in the ordinance, commerce, in the document and in the ordinance, it's always referred to as event, and in your definition as event, there were two, in step two, you call it a special events permit application, so it really should just be event permit application because, and then in section eight, special events committee, it really should just say events committee, I think, because special events is something different than what you're doing here. And then I did have some questions about the fees and things because, and my question was, is the fee schedule applied differently if the city is an event cosponsor?
That was not adopted as part of this year's fee schedule. So there, there is no language in our fee schedule that people get rates for different reasons, except for under the community building that I'm aware of. That is the only place where we offer a change in fees based on.
Yeah, I was just curious about that. And because to Derek's point, some nonprofits are bigger, to Mark's point, some nonprofits are bigger to others, and trying to apply fees, and I understand, because some of these are fire fees, and I understand there's rules and trying to do all of that. But to Mark's, to Alderman Spencer's point, because our, our local nonprofits do these activities to fundraise for their mission, which usually benefits the city or another local nonprofit, you know, so that, so I don't know what we do about that, because I've just looked at things, just like barricades, it says $20 an hour. Well, is that per barricade? When does the clock start running? Because I said, for example, if it was an eight-hour event and there were four barricades, that'd be $640. So I, so just all of that, trying to clarify all of that, and I had just some more examples, but the Maritime Museum conversation was part of that. So anyway, that's all.
I have a question.
Did you want to respond to any of that while you're standing there, ma'am?
No, sir.
That's fine.
Yeah, just the fee schedule was already adopted as part of the, and so that, yeah, that is kind of over my scope of what I was aiming to do.
I understand. Alderman Davis?
This is a question for you. I believe that the Unity Organization primarily has events at Cavernous Park. Am I right, Derek? Okay. And so this would mean, as written, that they would have to basically rent the park for $700. Is that what you're thinking of?
Heather, what is the rental cost of your park?
The, for Cavernous Park, the rental is 75 for city residents and 150 for nonresidents. So, not 700.
So, can you define for me the difference?
Could you clarify, what do you mean by the difference? If, if they're just renting the park and they just want to do the park, then that's their rental fee.
But they will be having events.
Correct. And so then those, those things, this, so let me back it way up. This is the reason why, when trying to put together this permit, I had to be very clear that each permit's going to look a little different per event, and that it's going to take all the department heads coming together, sitting around the table, and building out the package for what they say they need in their event permit. So for instance, if all they're doing is renting the park, then that wouldn't even trigger this ordinance unless they were expecting 500 attendees. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess.
Juneteenth event, a lot of people there.
Okay.
But I'd be, I don't know what the head count was.
So let's say that the Juneteenth event had 500 people. So then they would come, they'd fill out the permit. If they were not cosponsoring with the city, which is a choice that the nonprofit could make one way or the other if they wanted to, then they'd pay a $100 fee for the permit. The department heads would come together and see what they have asked for as part of the outline of their permit, and then charge the appropriate fees based on the already adopted fee schedule. The only fee associated with the permit itself is $100, which can be waived if it's a city cosponsored event.
Any other comments?
I just want to make sure, I understand the 500 people thing, that, that part I understand. I understand why there's a permit fee for it. So let's say that they want to put up three 10 by 10 tents. Are they charged per tent that they're putting up?
That's a fire department question.
And I just want to make sure, because I know that there was something about the tents.
There's no fee for a 10 by 10 tent. The fire code specifically states that it's, it's a, has to be 400 square feet before there's a fee or an inspection done, unless the tent is up against a building or a structure. Then it has to have a safety inspection.
Okay.
So then there would be a fee for that.
So like our 4th of July tent that we put on the Garrison lawn, we already have a fee and inspection for that?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So, and again, the vendors at Juneteenth with their individuals would not be penalized. 10, 10 by 10 tents, like a funeral tent, would not have to have an inspection unless they're cooking under it. Now, if they are cooking under it, that, that, they do have to have an inspection for that, for safety reasons.
How much?
I would think it's probably 75.
And then I see that there's an exclusion for funerals, and it also says that there's an exclusion for spontaneous demonstrations protected under the First Amendment.
Yes.
What about planned demonstrations protected under the First Amendment, under the Second Amendment?
If it's a First Amendment event, we're, we're stepping back from it. If they submitted a permit, if, if they took the time to put through the permit, we would review it for safety reasons, and then again, that would be a consideration from the police department, but as far as the permit fee and things like that, we, we would not touch it.
Okay, so any demonstration is protected? We're not overstepping. I just, just want to make sure we're covering all bases.
Isn't, there's some kind of a permit for a, a public demonstration?
There are permits, but you don't actually have to abide by them. So. Any other questions? I have a series of questions. One of them has been inserted into this document, it has to do with the First Amendment, and that is, there's a lot of things I would, since this is the public hearing part of it, and we're not going to vote on it, I would like the city to consider this three-page document I have here that talks about, expands the public, the First Amendment issue. So it gives staff guidance, so they don't make a mistake about what they can charge. You could have a thousand people here, if that means we have to bring every police officer back in to do that, it's free. That's because the Supreme Court says it's free. There's a number of things that are free, and there's others that we can charge for. We can charge for, they leave a whole bunch of litter behind. Now, finding out who you're going to charge for leaving all the litter behind might be quite difficult, because it may not be, anybody wants to take responsibility for the thousand people. But we need to have policies and procedures in here that follow the guidelines of the Supreme Court. So I'm hoping that we can work on that. So the document, as been pointed out here, runs into the fee schedule. And the fee schedule says any tent under 200 square feet is $75. That's 10 by 10. So the fee schedule for the fire department, because they're looking at it from a different aspect, we're, as I read the document, we're saying if you put up a 10 by 10 tent, you have to pay us $75 per tent, because it says less than seven, less than, less than 200 feet.
So, I'd love to comment on that. The only reason why I included the fee schedule at all was on the request from Mrs. Moss Sattler. She said she wanted to see what fees may or may not be included. And so all I did was.
It's not, it's not your bailiwick, I understand.
Exactly. All I did was download it from the website and highlighted the things that may or may not apply depending on the various events.
I think, I just, Elena, I absolutely understand that those are two different issues. You're, and you know that I'm very much in favor of this program.
Absolutely.
So the problem that I have is after I read the fee schedule, it says, these two documents are going to be crashing into each other. I'm thinking we need to go back and look at the fee schedule and put more clarity into that. I mean, there's some kind of bizarre ones. If Elena wants to play around with nitroglycerin and dynamite, you have, you can get that and you can do that in Southport if you pay $275. If you're a movie company, you get to blow up everything for 20 bucks. I don't understand, there's a whole list of, after I really scanned it and looked at it and refreshed my memory, I think we have to go back and do this, another, another cleaning of the fee schedule at the same time, because there's fees in there, the $20 per cone can easily be read that way. If that's not our intent, our intent, then we have to give staff guidance that that's not our intent. If we're saying it's $20 for cones, then that's what it should be saying, it should be clear on that. So I have a bunch of notes for that, for the staff to look at between now and when we go back to having another conversation about this for a vote. So, the First Amendment was a big one for me, then I saw the fee schedule and it was going to conflict with what we think something like a small nonprofit's going to do. It would be hundreds of dollars, because they put little 10 by 10 tents up, and we would have to charge them because of the fee schedule. So I would like to have those two things run together to figure out how we marry them up, so we get the, what we're actually looking for. So that's my soapbox. Yes ma'am?
And, I have a question for you. Don't we already have an ad hoc committee on fees?
We do, but unfortunately, this got away. So we have this fees that are, that are posted, and we need to go back and look at that.
Lost my train of thought.
That happens pretty often.
Oh, Lord.
Oh. So unless Alderman Mosseller comes back with a.
I know what it was. Thank you, thank you. And as you're, and I, like I said, I appreciate all this work and we need this, so this is none of that. I think there needs to be, and I'm sort of, again, tagging on the heels of Alderman Spencer's conversation, is how we, we need to be fair to, because all our local nonprofits are doing things for the city. So we need to figure out what that fairness looks like and who should be being charged fees and how all that works. And I know you're not the fee person, et cetera, but I'm just saying, that needs to be part of the conversation.
So Mr. Manager, do you, do you have general gist of what we're trying to get at here?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll go back and work with Brady on the First Amendment language, make sure that's good. We'll, as the staff department heads, work on the fee schedule, bring it back for a general fee schedule update, which is part of the budget every year, but we'll come back as a supplemental report to the fee schedule.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Sound good, ma'am?
Sounds great.
Because again, you know that I was doing a little happy dance when I first saw this. All right. Thank you. The next topic is the final plat, the waters of Southport. And Tom Z, thank you very much. I know. I'm just, I'm just going to congratulate you.
I didn't want to drop it.
Ma'am, could you take, you could take one, two minutes?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm going to bring the meeting back into order. And just for the record, we still have a quorum. Alderman Mustard had to leave, so I just want to make that point. So, Mo, floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you very much. This evening Stanley Martin Holmes is requesting a final plat approval for the waters at Southport. This is a major subdivision final plat request. So this is, uh, this was a conventional subdivision for our ten zoning. The property is located between Leonard and Moore Streets and has a one-way entrance from Stewart Avenue, uh, two-way entrances from Fodel and, uh, Sand Dollar Lane from the hammock subdivision. Subdivision has, uh, and the developers have installed all of the required infrastructure and improvements, and they have been inspected by the appropriate agencies and departments. We'd like to mention that since the submittal of this packet, the light fixtures have come in, so the full light, lighting for the subdivision has been installed and is, is taking care of it that. So the, um, improvements that are required are the streets, the street lights, traffic controls such as stop signs, street signs, the cluster mailbox, sidewalks, water sewer, stormwater, and any open space amenities that are required. So all of those have been installed and inspected like I spoke. A final plat must include a request for the acceptance of public improvements. So, um, except when there is an exclusion or an exception by the UDO administrator that can grant an extension of the acceptance, acceptance until eighty percent of the lots are either conveyed to private owners or there's a certificate of occupancy. Since we no longer allow financial guarantees or performance bonds, um, I would recommend that we do allow this extension because there is a potential for some severe damage to the sidewalks and the roads during construction of the homes. So that is one. The other is, um, due to the extreme conditions at the application, um, when they were filing, there were extreme heat and drought at the time. So this subdivider is requesting an extension on the planting of their required tree, mitigation so that they can make sure that the trees are established and will become established trees. So staff, uh, this is, is an administrative approval and, um, staff recommends approval of the final plat for lots one through forty of the waters at Southport subdivision. It, uh, based on the conformance with the previously approved preliminary plat, the applicable standards of the UDO with the following conditions, that the applicant will request acceptance of the required infrastructure to be dedicated to the public at the time eighty percent, or that equals thirty-two of the lots that have been conveyed to individual ownership or have issued a certificate of occupancy. And then the second would be mitigation required for all common areas will be completed on or before December thirty-first this year. And the remaining mitigation per lot will be installed within one year or prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy due to the extreme planting conditions at the time of the final plat.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I, that last part that you're talking about, the eighty percent, that's not for annexation purposes, is it? Is that what you're trying to say?
No, so that is when they, we, they would ask us to take over their, their public infrastructure. That's correct, yes.
No, I'm, I don't want to, I thought they were already in. I just want to make sure that I understood the question. More questions, but I'm going to defer to the board first. I thought so.
Um, when we, when we had the preliminary plat before us, um, we were looking at a lot of little circles for trees. It is now, I've driven through just yesterday, uh, the roads and so forth, just to see what's there. And of course, we pretty much all remember what happened with the flooding. And the, the property was clear cut except for trees around the extreme perimeters. This clear cut property became a lake. I don't know if that what, is what inspired the, the new name, the waters. But at any rate, um, that was very disappointing. I looked at the lighting, um, fixtures that are up, and a question that I have about that is, um, do they comply with our lighting policy?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
And they were installed by BEMC.
Okay. Um, and the other thing I'd like to point out is that a, a very strict stipulation that was made with the approval of the preliminary plat was that no construction trucks and vehicles would use Sand Dollar Lane. Well, they did to the point where residents of the hammocks with their own money had to put up semi-permanent barricades to keep them out. Uh, I don't find that the builders are, uh, inclined to be compliant. That's a statement, I guess, not a question other than about the light.
I want to make a comment, and if I'm factually wrong, please correct me. This is the first time since seventeen ninety-two that when we take over a complex, everything has already been inspected way before the final plat map is done. That is, you know, we have the K's Cove, we have the hammocks, we have Price's Creek, and the way the city did business is they were allowed to start selling before that was done and everything just went to hell in a handbasket. So I want to compliment Tom Z and Public Works for making sure that that was done correctly and the core samples and cameras and whatever else had to be done. We are moving in the right direction going forward. And we still have the three orphaned children here that we have to work on, but we'll work on that next. Just for the tree issue, though, you did hear why they're not putting the trees in right now? The reason that I'm not putting the trees in right now is because of the drought that we've had in this area. I've known this because I had trees put in. You want to put them in the fall or the winter. That's when you put them in to ensure the best chance of survival. If you put a tree in, in the middle of the summertime, they will die. And that's just a fact. So, because I've done it. So, as I understand, the document is they have a year? I'm not sure that I'm really happy with that part, but I would like it to be by next spring that the trees go in because they can do it all fall and winter. I don't know if we can modify that, get a agreement from them, something like that?
Mr. Mayor, I think in the proposed motion, it says that the mitigation required for all common areas will be completed on or before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So that would make them have to have it completed before the end of this year.
Does that, does that include the trees?
That is the trees, but that is just a portion of the mitigation that's required. They do have to add them per lot. Again, it may be an issue with the construction if we try to put them in too soon, but the true mitigation for the-
The worst part, the worst it would be is a year from now.
That's correct.
And if they don't do that, what's the penalty?
Well, I will just make sure that we can hold certificate of occupancies, I believe, until we can get that installed.
Would you double check on that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, it's probably too late to even explore this, but I understood, and I think most of the other Alderman understood that this was not going to be a clear cutting. But they did. I mean, you don't have to clear cut to leave enough room to build a house and the, and the infrastructure for the house, but that was done. And it's, I think it's going to be hell to pay with drainage. And drainage is going to affect the hammocks.
Mo, is it like in our ordinance that you basically can clear cut as long as you have a mitigation plan?
No, the current ordinance does not allow that, but they came in and they were under the old ordinance for this tree removal.
That's why they got to do it. Yes. The, and I'm assuming since we took over, we've approved the stormwater, that the original problem on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four was they hadn't graded the dirt correctly at that point because they were just doing the preliminary thing, and it caused new flooding on Stewart that had never been flooded before. Tom Z, is, do we feel comfortable that this plan is going to address that? Thank you, sir.
For those at home, Tom Z gave us a thumbs up.
All right, so this is a-
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plat for lots one through forty based on conformance with the previously approved preliminary, preliminary plat and with the applicable standards of the City of Southport Unified Development Ordinance with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant will request acceptance of the required infrastructure to be dedicated to the public at the time eighty percent or thirty-two of the lots have been conveyed to individual ownership or issued a certificate of occupancy. Number two, mitigation required for all common areas will be completed on or before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and the remaining mitigation per lot will be installed within one year or prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy due to extreme planting conditions at the time of final plat.
Is there, is there a second to that motion? Has the motion a second? Is there any discussion? Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It's, it passes three to one. The next issue is the public hearing, uh, public hearing on stormwater regulations and ordinance. I entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Does it move?
Has a motion a second? Any discussion? Not hearing any? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous we're in public hearing. Tom Z, are you going to give us a briefing here?
Have a PowerPoint. I was waiting for Mo to introduce me, but declined, so we'll pass that. Okay, proposed stormwater ordinance, which you have, um, just some- helps if I turn it on. Purpose of the ordinance, um, we're looking to protect, maintain, and enhance public health, safety, and general welfare, all by controlling the adverse effects of stormwater associated with new development within the city. And when I say new development, I'm not talking about large scale, just large-scale developments. We're all, also talking about individual lots that are being built on, um, houses that are being, uh, expanded and added on, uh, additional impervious coverage by making driveways larger. All of that is considered the development that we're talking about. And we're looking to mitigate runoff. Mitigating runoff is accomplished through flood control, groundwater recharge, and pollutant reduction. There we go. What, what does the ordinance do? First, it establishes methods to control, to manage the quantity of stormwater runoff. It also establishes methods to control, to manage the quality of the stormwater runoff. Quantity and quality are the two important things to realize here. It identifies stormwater best management practices. It encourages the use of green infrastructure best management practices. It provides different standards for minor and major development, and that's something that the current ordinance doesn't even address a minor development. It provides for a waiver to properties for exceptional hardship. Come on. There we go. It outlines requirements for a stormwater plan. It provides technical standards. It includes safety standards for what goes in. It details the permit process. It includes maintenance and repair requirements for the facilities. If we don't maintain, if they're not maintained properly, they don't, they lose their effectiveness, and we have increased flooding. Lastly, it establishes the legal authority to inspect it, monitor, and enforce compliance with the ordinance. So, as I said, it creates two categories, minor development and major development. This will apply to all lots, including non-conforming lots. Minor development, this is primarily for infill housing and additions. As I've said to the planning board, I think I've said it to this board, and I've said it to many people around town, the major issues that we have with development are not from the large-scale developments. They come in with a plan and they address it. Now, those plans can't handle thousand-year storms like on September, but the major problem within the city is infill housing and additions and things like that. That's what's creating the problems that we have. So with this, you know, we'll capture the very small projects that collectively contribute to an increase of stormwater runoff. This additional impervious coverage on any lot affects all the abutting properties. In many instances, properties abutting the abutting properties as well as our city streets. What we're looking to do with this is any development that increases impervious surface by eight hundred or more square feet or disturbs more than two thousand square feet of the lot. And the requirement that we're looking for is to infiltrate two inches per square foot of new impervious area. We're not saying to go after what is already there. We're not saying to go after what is already there, it's just the increase that's coming. So methods for minor. The two big ones are a rain garden, which is basically a landscaped area that will handle the water, plantings go in it, it's an attractive thing, it's not uh, you know, this ugly hole or anything in front. And it can be combined with rain barrels on the house. Second one is a dry well, hole in the ground, infiltrate the water in. The ordinance does include for waivers for minors. If you demonstrate that meeting the standards would result in an exceptional hardship. To do that, you have to show the benefits to the public good would substantially outweigh any detriments. So there is a mechanism to grant waivers on on properties. Next would be the major development. This would apply to more to anything more than ten thousand square feet of impervious increase. Does not apply to an individual property owner. Within this, it will require water quantity. Two-year peak flow would be reduced by fifty percent. The ten-year peak flow would be reduced by seventy-five percent. And the hundred-year peak flow would be reduced by eighty percent. It also includes water quality. Where everything would be required to have an eighty percent total suspended solid removal for the water quality design storm, which is one point five inches over two hours. It uses groundwater recharge and green best management practices. So the difference is current first proposed ordinance. Currently, the ordinance is per ten thousand square feet of impervious coverage or one acre of disturbance. What we're proposing is on the minor side, eight hundred square feet of impervious coverage, two thousand square feet of disturbance, that's an either or. On the major, twenty-five hundred square feet of impervious coverage and ten thousand square feet of disturbance. Minor development, currently there is no regulation. It's a free for all. You could do whatever you want, whenever you want. We're looking to infiltrate two inches per square foot of new impervious. On the major development, water quality, water quantity. Right now, it calls for the two-ten and twenty-five-year storm to have no increase in peak flow. As I just said, what we're looking to do is have the two-year storm peak flow reduced by fifty percent. The ten-year by seventy-five percent and the hundred-year by eighty percent. Currently, there's no water quality, no total suspended regulations or anything. We're looking at going within eighty percent total suspended solid removal for the water quality design storm accomplished through groundwater recharge and green best management practices. This is something that the current ordinance also doesn't include a maintenance permit. This ordinance requires an annual maintenance permit for all the major detention basins that are out there. The permit is to ensure that the stormwater facility is properly functioning. It will require quarterly maintenance logs to be submitted. And these do not need to be filled out by an engineer, it could be filled out by any member of the HOA. Just they're signing off that they've gone out and looked at, you know, various things. It's being maintained, the outfall is not plugged. It's not filling in with sediment, things like that. Individual property owners are exempt from the maintenance permit. This is only for the large-scale developments. Does not apply to the individual dry wells and rain gardens. Next up, ways to complement the ordinance going forward. Should the board decide to pass this, the next step that I would recommend is going with the land disturbance ordinance. This would go hand in hand with the stormwater ordinance. It would preserve trees and woodlands from unjustifiable destruction. Preserve preserve soil and erosion from sediment, present soil from erosion and sedimentation. And it would protect the use and transfer of topsoil. Additional items to also look at. Impervious coverage limits, current code does not have anything on impervious coverage. Lot coverage limits. There are none. And floor area ratio limits. And with that, any questions?
I have one. Existing properties. Okay, does this cover things with existing properties? For example, if adding an accessory building will, of course, add to the impervious coverage. And I it it seems intuitive to me that impervious means thing, water doesn't soak through versus pervious that it does. But that's the reverse, impervious, nothing soaks through. Do we, does this apply to existing properties?
It will apply to every property in town. The existing lot coverage that they have, the existing impervious coverage that they have is not covered by this. This is for any additional impervious coverage that that someone would put on their lot. It's not going retroactively back to things.
True, I got that, but so if somebody applies to add a accessory building, that's going to take it over the over the limit. If someone wants to add on to their their home, and that's going to take them over the limit. If they want to add concrete, pavers and so forth.
Yes.
That's going to And what is that percentage?
Uh, it was eight hundred square feet of additional impervious coverage or two thousand square feet of land disturbance.
You think that's enough?
You have to start somewhere. Best way to put it. It it's a starting point. Right now, there's nothing. Right now, anybody could do it. You could make your lot a hundred percent impervious. There's nothing stopping you from doing that.
I've I've talked about this before, but I live next door to a home that is one hundred percent impervious.
Yep.
And I get all the benefit of all the runoff from.
Yes. One other thing I will add, this, if someone has an existing dwelling and they tear that dwelling down and put a bigger one up, they would only be responsible for the additional impervious coverage, not for the entire house. If the house is, let's say, two thousand square feet and they put it back at three thousand square feet, they would only have to address a thousand square feet.
When you say address, what does that mean?
They would have to handle one thousand square feet of additional coverage, which would be, they'd have to find a way to infiltrate two inches per thousands, you know, for each two thousand square feet, two thousand two inches per thousand square.
Yeah, I want you to explain that one to me because I surely don't understand what you're talking about. So and everybody else, we're gonna have to explain it to them, too.
For every square foot of impervious coverage that you have, you have to handle two inches of rainwater on site through a dry well, a rain garden, things like that.
What you're saying is you got to mitigate it using one of those things?
Mitigate, great word, Frank, thank you.
So the stormwater runoff quantity standards apply to both the major and minor.
Correct.
How does one know what the fifty, seventy-five and eighty percent respectively the pre-construction peak runoff rates?
That's all calculated as part of the application that would come into us. And that's just for major development. That's not for the individual minor. That's only for a major. The waters, for instance, their detention basin would have to be set up, so they're reducing the outfall. They're hiring a professional engineer to do everything.
Okay, so that is just for the majors, not for the minor?
Correct. Minor is just two inches per additional square foot.
And how would I know how if I'm doing the two inches per square foot?
Yes.
How would I know that as a homeowner?
Application, we will have a nice booklet handbook and we will walk you through the process.
So they're not going in there blind. You're going to give them directions on specifically what they have to do.
Hundred percent, one hundred percent. You know, the the guidelines set everything up. On the majors, the engineers all understand it. The individual homeowners do not. We will be walking them through hand in hand, explaining things, helping them through it.
And I have seen rain gardens before and they are beautiful, like
They are.
They they are beautiful, and I think that I think the intention here to mitigate some of our stormwater issues would is, I think it's a good one, and I think that looking at the impervious coverage that we allow is a sound next step for this.
Disturbance equals bigger rain guard, bigger disturbance, bigger rain guard.
Bigger impervious coverage.
Okay.
Because, you know, when you're doing something, if you're putting, let's say, an eight hundred square foot building up, you're probably disturbing about a thousand to fifteen hundred square feet because of all the work going in and out. It's only for the increase in impervious. So the more you put in, the more you have to mitigate the property owner.
This is a new world for us. And I would like to make sure that we somehow look how we're going to notify the builders. Because every time we change fees, they've had a problem and they're already making estimates on new housing and they don't realize our fees because they work all over and they're amazingly, they don't tune into this room every twice a month. So I would like the manager to think about how we I I've always wanted us to have a voluntary builders thing, an email chain that we send new things out to rather than them having to guess when they have to look to see when we're going to do something. So that's one issue. The question we're going to get asked by some certain group of people is, so how much is this going to cost me? And are we prepared? If we're not prepared tonight, that's okay, because this is only a public hearing. Are we prepared to say the range of cost for the new house or the new thing that you're doing is going to, what's a rain garden run me?
Probably under twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. So if you could go back and think about that a little more for today. I'm I'm concerned, I'm, I think you may have answered the question, but I wasn't tracking very well. And that is, I'm Harry Hommer, or I'm anybody, and I quality of the water. Who in the city is running around checking the quality of the water?
The water quality is only for the majors, it's not for the minors.
Okay, so
And by quality of water, what we're talking about is suspended solids, running off of, you know, sediment and things like that.
Okay, so we have the skill sets right now to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Is that all in your head?
Um, practice, I've done it.
No, I mean
Anybody else got it?
Can anybody else do it?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
It's not that hard.
Any engineer who does stormwater work can can do quality and quantity. Yes.
Okay.
It it's a standard thing. It is not, you know, rocket science.
Okay. I think that's it for right now. I I just want to make sure that we have a an answer that on average for the average home, yada, 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 it's about two thousand twenty-five hundred dollars.
I I I've run that number and I haven't done it in the past. This has been going, I I started this about two years ago. So this is a two-year process. And I know, I think you had asked me this about a year ago, and I think for some reason, I got twenty-five hundred for a rain garden and about five thousand for a dry well. It it it's in my, I don't have it in front of me, but for some reason, I'm recalling those two numbers.
And you talked about rain barrels. A rain barrel normally is around thirty-five gallons, I think, maybe forty. They usually use pickle barrels to do them. So if I have I think the average house, maybe three spouts, four spouts, something like that. How much does that defer? Do we have some kind of equation? If I put them all in, do my rain garden have to be X?
It would, all that would depend on the size of the the increased impervious. So you know, if if it's an empty lot and you're putting a two thousand square foot house, you're talking a lot different than if you're putting, you know, an eight hundred square foot addition on the house. So
But we would be able to do the math and be able to help the homeowner understand what that is.
One hundred percent, yes.
Can you have a five hundred gallon containment system?
Yes. You could have a hundred, you could have a thousand, you know, it, all that stuff, yes.
All right. So there is nothing illegal to harvesting rainwater in Southport?
Not that I'm aware of.
I hope not.
Okay.
Sounds like someone on the boards already doing it.
Rain gardens can vary in size. Depending on, because I know I had a request a couple of years ago, we had a problem in one of the cul-de-sacs in our development. And the lady there who was getting flooded out was wanting to put a rain garden in there, so started doing a little snooping around. And the money I was getting, they were telling me was fifteen grand. But this was a big one.
Yeah, like I said, I'm talking about, you know, for a regular residential house.
Any other questions? Yes, I would, once again, last call, sir. Do you want to speak? Absolutely.
Understood it to be a public hearing. Thank you. Rich Bandera, four oh nine North Burlington app. On the, I I read through the regulation and it's pretty dense and difficult to understand and you know, I think that in the past, Oak Island, for instance, has this a pre-development, post-development kind of storm management requirement where you have to manage everything on the site. And so saying that, what happens is that when you do that, to get the stormwater system on those parcels, they clear cut the site. Because the storm management, the storm management requirements are so strict. I think the minor permit, what I understood about what I read and what I heard is that when you, when you go over eight hundred square feet of impervious surface, it triggers the stormwater management under a minor permit. I think that, you know, I I would say that's not tied into a site size. So you could have a, let's say, a five-acre site and want to build eight hundred in one square foot house and you would trigger this requirement, right? I think that's correct. So what I'm getting at is that, what I'm trying to get is answers out of it because it affects what I do and that kind of thing. But if you're building on any site, let's say a traditional house, you're building a garage or building a driveway, you're building a fifteen hundred square foot footprint with a master bedroom on the ground floor, great room, basic kitchen, that kind of thing. That's about twenty-six hundred square feet of impervious surface. That would trigger a major permit under this ordinance. And a major permit under this ordinance, that's a standard home. And if it was on a ten thousand square foot, a a five-acre site, it would require a major permit, it would require civil engineering to to design it. I think I'm correct on that in that it states the design professional has to seal that plan. So what I'm trying to understand is that moving forward, if that's what it is, that's what it is. But so I just kind of would like some basic answers to it is that if I were to build a house on any site in Southport that exceeded twenty-five hundred square foot and impervious surface, it would trigger a major permit. And it would require a civil engineer to seal that stormwater design. And if that's the case, that's fine. I just need to understand if that is the case. You answered the question about grandfather and existing impervious surface, it doesn't, it's not relevant. But if I could just get answers to that tonight, I think that would be helpful. So if if it's twenty-five hundred and one square feet, it would trigger the major permit for a house, a residential lot.
As written, yes. The intent, though, is not As written, yes. Uh, the intent, though, is not for the individual house to go into the major and require all the additional things. So.
Is there a way to come to some kind of change to that?
We'll work on something.
Okay.
We'll work on something for them.
Okay, so as time it comes back, we'll we'll have to decide whether or not that, and I'll leave it to you and the manager to figure that out and the, on our council. Do we have to have another public hearing? But we'll worry about that later if you can work on that issue. Do you know Mr. Bandera?
No.
He is a resource that you may want to get to know. Okay?
Okay.
I think the other, like, on the other towns, and I I I'm not opposed to any of this. Let me say that. I think it's needed. But in other areas, sometimes they do a percentage of, like, based on lot size. Like, let's say you, if you, a bald head, they have, if you have a, like, again, it goes back to the size of lot, a five acre lot, you twenty five percent of coverage, a thirty by hundred foot dot deep lot, thirty percent of coverage. It kind of tied to that rather than tied to specific numbers. And so and believe me, I'm not trying to be critical. I'm just trying to understand it. Um, that's all I'm really getting at. But thank you for your response and thank you for letting me speak.
Is there anybody else here for this particular topic? Yes, sir, go ahead.
My name is Charles Litterwood, seven four five Skipjack Circle. Um, with the stormwater, I guess my question would be, I've asked, um, and Mo this week, who is overseeing the stormwater permit that the developers are being in compliance? Is that here through our permitting or is that with the state?
Tom Z.
As I said to you earlier this week, if it is a state issued stormwater permit, the state is the one who handles that, not the city.
To clarify, on the last topic we just had, which was the waters. And we were told that the stormwater had been approved.
That was approved by the city.
By the city.
Yes, there was also a state permit on that, but the city also had a permit on that. That's part of what what you were talking about earlier. That was one of the first ones.
Right. So I guess to answer his question, the state still has an approval process and the city has some kind of approval process.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that I heard that correctly.
And in in most cases and going forward, our regulations are going to be more strict and more restrictive than the states.
And that is because the state statute allows for that.
Correct.
It's your, your mic, sir.
So just to follow up, and maybe I can get with the city manager there. The state requires certain criteria to stay in compliance. I was just wondering, how does that fit with Southport? My main concern right now is there's a development being done adjacent to our property that there's stormwater. I don't even see the stormwater permit for the state on the state website and they're under development right now.
Have you brought that to attention of the manager or to Tom Z?
I spoke with Tom about this this week. Yes. I haven't got any reply back.
We'll get your reply back, okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
I would still like for us to consider the next step of a percentage of coverage of permeable versus impermeable, um, and look at that sooner rather than later. I understand we got to start with something to move forward. But I think that, as has been mentioned, a, an eight hundred square foot addition on a three acre piece of property is very different than in eight hundred foot, eight hundred square foot addition on one of the lots in downtown Southport, one of the non-conforming lots. So I think that's a really big difference.
And one of the things to keep in mind is ask how many three acre lots are there remaining within the city? There, there, there aren't many. And yes, it it needs to be addressed. I'm not going to disagree with that. But ninety percent of the city is, let's say, fifty by hundred lots.
But my lot is point eight two. So I would still meet the eight hundred movement, even though I can have a football game in my backyard. I think we we might have to look at that piece.
I, yeah, I had always thought that we were going to do this, excuse me, by percentage of coverage.
That, that's a whole different animal. Um, we, we could look at that. But not, not really. Um, we, we have no lot coverage percentages. We have none of that anywhere in any of our ordinances. If we had all that, yes, then we could. But with nothing there to start with, how do we go?
I don't follow you on that.
We're going to be pulling a number out of the air for something. But we have no basis for what we're doing. If, let's say, we had a twenty five percent lot coverage on every, you know, within the zoning ordinance, we have a starting point to go with and go from there. But we don't have that right now.
Well, should.
We couldn't. Well, this would be the beginning.
But you're putting the cart before the horse if you're using a percentage for stormwater without having a percentage for lot coverage to start with.
Isn't that just a calculation of the amount of impermeable surface on a current lot? Isn't that a quick calculation to figure out what the percent, the current percentage is?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I don't understand what we don't have then. Now I'm confused.
These are, I've got something completely different. I think you need, we need a baseline because you don't want to just pull twenty five percent out of the air.
Right.
And then it doesn't really work because we don't know what exists, what's works and how keeping this impervious coverage contained as well as this water on site and infiltrating on non-residential types of development. So we have to kind of have a, a starting point to see what will work. Um, and I don't want to throw too much of a kink into this, but we also have to think about, uh, Centerville three eighty two. Because this very well may trigger down zoning, so we have been treading very lightly. The stormwater that we have proposed now does not, it does not make anyone non-conforming. It does not change the use or of your property. But if we start saying that you can't use so much of your property, it, we'd have to really, we have to be careful of that.
I think that's an excellent point that I'm glad you brought that up. There's the perfect world and we're not in the perfect world. So maybe it is what we're doing right now is the best we can do for right now until something changes in Raleigh.
Is this going to prevent massive homes from filling the entire footprint of a property?
No, because there is no lot coverage limits within the ordinance. What I'm trying.
Yeah, we built, we start that first. Because there, I mean, the people are building massive homes and parking on our right of ways and.
That's the issue with the state buildings out there is they could consider that a taking, that you reduce the value of the property in the world that we live in at the moment.
And and that's why we came up with the square footage numbers to avoid that. So we, we just have to add some kind of language into it that, you know, this is intended for a single family house. Um, and, you know, something along that lines.
I'm just confused as to if we don't have a baseline, how do we get a baseline? How do we get a baseline number?
Well, I think that's why they're talking about additional disturbance rather than a percentage.
Correct. That's why we locked into square footage, not into percentages, because we don't have that baseline. That, and that, that's what I was saying. If we were to come up and use a percentage now for uh, impervious, uh, for, you know, when stormwater regulations would trick in. But we don't have a number for a maximum lot coverage. We, we're, we're putting the cart before the horse. We, we need that lot coverage first and then we can work with the percentage. But we don't have that starting point.
We must be fortunate out where I live because each lot in that development has a certain amount. It, it tells you exactly how much pervious and impervious uh, soil you have to have.
Yes.
And there's been, there've been several people out there that have been very unhappy because they've had to put in fifty seven stone for a driveway as opposed to
Yep.
concrete.
And that is a lot of the older developments in town. My development is also one where each individual lot was assigned an impervious coverage that they were allowed by the state under the general permit that they received.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. I would entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing. I apologize.
I moved to come out of public hearing.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any conversation? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. We're out of public hearing. All right, we're to the end. We've had one committee report already today. Uh, is there anybody who has a specific one they want to highlight? Otherwise, they're in the package.
I just want to mention the Fourth of July Festival is doing a fundraiser for a trip to Washington DC to help with the offset the costs of uh, putting on the festival. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and we, you can find that on the Fourth of July Festival Facebook page and website. It's on the city. The Fourth of July Festival's official Facebook page and website is where you can find that information.
Any other? Okay, uh, the managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Um, update on our comprehensive land use plan. So staff has received feedback from the state. Uh, Department of, Division of Coastal Management on our land use plan. So the planning board will be reviewing the comprehensive plan at their upcoming meetings. Um, and once they review that and make a recommendation, we'll forward that to this board for your deliberation. So we expect that to be in the September timeline. Y'all get that copy. We'll plan on holding that public hearing in October for potential final adoption in November. Uh, this week Electric City, which is our, um, which we are members of, along with the other municipal power providers in the state and our region, held their annual conference this past week. Uh, Alderman Kelly, Spencer, myself, and Energy Manager Larry Ditten have the opportunity to, to attend. Uh, when we are also proud to share that Southport received the Public Power Award of Excellence in recognition for our commitment to strengthening the public power, uh, their dedication to service to our community and our customers. So special shout out to Energy Manager Ditten for his leadership and moving our electric system forward. And then finally, um, as we know, the hurricane Aaron is out in the ocean. So staff continues to monitor that. We're hopeful that that will remain and turn out to sea, but should it come our area, staff is prepared to respond if we need to. Thank you.
The next topic is the mayor's comments that I have done. The staff reports are there. Board comments. Alderman Davis, do you have anything?
Thank you. Um, first, um, back to the topic of salubrious breezes. Well, it so happens, as a Southport historian told me, um, when Joshua Potts came to Southport, uh, he was sick. Don't know what, probably croup, something like that. Anyway, he also said on his way back to uh, Wilmington, he was praising Southport's salubrious breezes. And he was completely healed. And then he added the fact that the salubrious breezes tickled his pickle. So make of that what you will. Uh, also, we, um, I want to report that the Parks and Recreation Children's Crab Derby is on Labor Day, Monday, September the first. And um, there are, uh, I believe it starts at nine o'clock. Uh, there are age groups and in each age group, there are prizes for the largest crab and for the most crabs. And so this is something that uh, is for the children. People who are young at heart don't get any of the prizes. You don't get to catch crabs. Your reward is going to be that you get to see kids having a wonderful time. So I know that this will be further publicized, but I just wanted to remind you it's going to be at the city dock in the yacht basin. And uh, I could attest that there are crabs there. Finally, I'd like to ask the city manager to address something that came up during the public comment uh, about historic preservation. And um, people were calling for what amounts to, I guess, a referendum. They wanted to put this on a ballot and so on. And the, and the way to do that, of course, is a referendum. But is this something that the state would allow us to put on a referendum?
So no municipalities or counties do not have the ability to have general policy referendums. That's why we have a democratic republic where the voters elect the aldermen to make these decisions. So um, we would have to have special local bill for the legislature to grant us that power. Which just like we tried to get the uh, prepared meals tax, they did not want to move forward on. So I couldn't imagine they'd want to move forward on generally policy matters which the board is charged with. So now, under current state law, the board does not have that power to put policy referendums on the ballot.
Alderman Kelly.
Um, I was able to attend the Electric Cities Conference this week. It's the second year that I have attended at this, uh, this conference. Um, it's extremely interesting to learn more about how our electricity grid works. Um, they talked quite a bit about the future of nuclear power and their, um, the ability to potentially grow uh, nuclear power in addition to um, some other sustainable power options in the future. So it was really interesting to hear about that. And then additionally, um, for me in particular, hearing about the um, private companies that are investing in power generation and power grids primarily, um, with the growth of data centers that are, that's happening throughout the country. They are realizing that the data centers um, are taking so much electrical bandwidth that they are not able to go wherever they feel that they're needed. So um, some of these companies are investing in power companies in order to be able to sustain their data centers. And they're doing upfront investment on that so that they don't unfairly harm the current power customers. So that way, rather than um, the current power customers having to kind of foot the bill while there's build out on some of this stuff, the larger private entities are investing in the power companies in order to do that. So I think that that's a really interesting thing that we're seeing. And I know we've talked about um, infrastructure growth and with larger developments here, um, trying to figure out how to have some of the larger developments contribute on the front end, um, for what they will be using on the back end. Uh, so it was just interesting to see that on a much larger scale. We're talking about, I think it was a, um, and I don't know, I don't remember if you remember the exact number. I think it was a ten billion dollar investment that they made in a power company in order to do this. I'm certainly not proposing anything of that scale. Um, but I think that there might be some opportunities and some, uh, we, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here to see how this can be done in Southport in the future potentially. So just thank you very much for allowing me to go that.
Alderman Spencer.
That was a great synopsis. I don't, our electric grid is our last enterprise fund. It's our last hope. So it is. So it is interesting to see how we could maybe parlay that into something that would help us sustain in the long term. I don't know if we've got a lot of room for, well, I know that they're not going to build data centers here because of the hurricanes. It was interesting that it's, I think, a data center's taken up like 750,000 residential customers, or that's the equivalent of what they demand and the power that's needed to run this new AI technology. They did mention AI. I was, sat at the front of the room and ate it up. But we're encouraging people to take on the technologies before they were overrun by them. So that was, it was Electric Cities, they really do educate us well. And I would encourage all the aldermen to try to attend next year. My condolences to Mr. Bobby Willis this week, last week, passed away, a lifelong resident of Southport. Condolences to Mary Jo, to Robert, and to Malcolm, his family members. Man had his own street name, so he had been here a long time, and we were going to miss him. I'm not a property. I don't like regulating Southport. I've come to the conclusion that I don't own Southport. It's not my right to tell Southport what it should be. We've had people that have come into the community, and they've improved Southport. They've taken rundown properties and made them the historic charm, and we didn't have to regulate them. I don't feel like I need to play God and control Southport from the grave. And that's what we'll be doing if we try to grandfather something in. That grandfathering is, we're not going to punch you in the face. We're going to punch the next generation in the face, and we're not going to have to face them. It's shallow. It's, it's, it's less, let's kick it down the curb. Let's kick the can down the road and make somebody else pay. And so I'm tired of this, let's control fear mongering. Oh, we're going to have a five-story building coming into Southport. You don't know that. Economics determine that. Highest and best use determine that. If we stifle growth, it will come back and bite us in the behind sooner rather than later. If you let a building like Bullfrog Corner to be produced and to have a two- or three-story building, it's going to have a life expectancy of 50 to 100 years. The cost to tear it down and to build something else is going to be so, it's going to take a while before it becomes something that you will tear down and build a five-story building. It's going to take hundreds of years. It's not going to happen like it's been pitched from this table. And I've seen it in my life. There's, I don't, I do miss the light ship. But I promise, the new people, they wouldn't have liked that thing tilting in the water, rusted bottom out of it. They wouldn't have enjoyed that. They would not have enjoyed the fish factory. They would not have enjoyed the thing. We have improved. I am from here. I've got the same 300 years of heritage that Miss Hutham brags about. But it's not my right to tell the future how to develop Southport and what Southport should be. It's already changed. It's not any his, it's already changed. Nobody complained about the IGA being torn down and turned into a CMC building for a church. That's a strong building. That's a steel building. When we have hurricanes, if we don't hide in the fire station, we can hide there. Anybody want to hide and amuse you? Anybody want to hide an old wooden building that's been there? So I just think we're pitching heat when we, when we fear monger. Oh, what would, what could come? The Lord could come tomorrow. We'd be done. So let's, let's think about that. Anything could happen. So I think someone said, we can't predict the future. And I don't think I'm Nostradamus, and I'm not going to try it either. So I'm done. I appreciate the time.
Alderman Lay?
After that. Normally, I get a little report on the ABC. Had another solid month at the ABC store. Mixed beverages down a little bit. Little study on that. People just aren't drinking as much when they go out to eat. Jim Poppy addressed us today. We're very fortunate to have him on that board. He has a strong background in retail, exceptionally strong. And we are very fortunate to have him now on the state ABC board. So that says a whole lot about him and the person he is. Again, very fortunate.
Yes, Mr. Poppy is a great asset, and it's a testament to the board to put him on that panel last time. Mark, have you ever, or Rebecca, have you ever wanted to see data centers? You go up to Dulles Airport, and there's a six-mile stretch. You'll see 12 of them. They're massive. And then if you go out to Prince William County, there's got to be now another dozen of them out there. And then Falkir County has another bunch of them. That area, Dominion Power is making a fortune, because they're everywhere. And they're massive buildings, no windows, and a hum. Because the hum is the air conditioning system.
And they, they did actually mention those at the conference. And then they, there's a significant investment in, not here, but another area in North Carolina where some big data centers are going to be coming in. So it's interesting to see it at the beginning stages and what that's going to look like going forward. And if you will indulge me, there was one other thing that I didn't mention about the conference. Being in the room with other elected officials, so that one of the breakouts was, city managers were together, the folks that work in the power departments were together, and the electeds were together. It was really interesting to sit in the room with other electeds and hear about the challenges that they are facing in their municipalities as well as what they're doing, looking forward to prepare their power grids for the future. So it was just great information all the way around, and certainly wonderful networking to be able to go and call on some of those people as we have things happening here in Southport. So thank you.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 for the consideration of qualifications and to establish negotiating, for negotiating agents. So move.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? We are in closed session. I will entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
So move?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any conversation? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
There's a motion and a second. Is there any conversation? Not hearing any. All in favors, please say aye. Any oppose?
Clear. Three and one.